Good afternoon. In accordance with Sections forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act nineteen ninety as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning that applies to property, permission to extend or alter lawful non-conforming uses, oh, thank you, and consent to sever property to create new lots. Thank you, sorry. We acknowledge the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishnaabe, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty thirteen with the Mississaugas of the Credit. Committee of Adjustment public hearings are conducted in a hybrid, in-person and virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submissions in person and others will participate virtually through WebEx. Meetings are also streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and have registered in advance will be connecting with a computer, tablet, or phone. All virtual participants will automatically be muted on entry. When your item is called, you'll be unmuted by the moderator one person at a time. We also ask that you mute your devices until you are called on to speak. Those participating by video appearance will be temporarily upgraded to panelists when your item is being held. During this time, your camera will be enabled. You will only be visible during your five-minute allotted speaking time. At all other times, your video will be disabled and you will be reinstated as an attendee. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Those participating through WebEx are not allowed to use share screen or any other panelist controls during a video appearance. The host will remove you from the panelist's role if you fail to respect this instruction. People attending in person today who want to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on an application must fill out a decision request card and those participating virtually need to submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address because the Committee of Adjustment and the Toronto local appeal body will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto local appeal body or in some limited circumstances to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. With respect to hearing procedure, I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda. Where an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation if desired. When the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the chair should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will comment when you are reaching the five minutes. Any presentation or other materials you wish to submit to the committee must have been emailed in advance of the hearing. Staff and committee members cannot accept materials at the hearing. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first and will make a presentation to the committee on the application. Please note that the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. Then individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Generally, we first call on speakers in the hearing room and then those participating through WebEx. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have finished their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant agent has an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion. The application will then be taken into committee for a decision. Before we start today, we have an item, uh, item sixteen, which was supposed to be heard at two o'clock, but the notice went out with a four o'clock time on it, so we won't be hearing that application until four o'clock. It will be the first one heard at four o'clock in case you are here on that item. And then, Mr., Secretary Treasurer, shall we start with deferrals or conflicts?
Uh, why don't we do, uh, so just a note, there's no deferrals for two, two P M.
Okay.
That's not until the four P M. And why don't we do the conflicts now for two?
Okay, conflicts. I have two conflicts, number twelve, the first one, because I know some of the people who are, um, they're actually in support of the application, but just to avoid any potential, um, conflict. And then, item nineteen as well, I have a conflict because it's in my neighborhood association area. So I believe Mr. Allison will step in his chair for, for the first item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. All right, item number twelve thirty-eight, Joy C Boulevard. Purpose of the application is to construct a new garden suite in the rear yard of the subject property. Thank you. We have, actually... Number of variances before us, we've a report from Community Planning, uh, urban forestry, as well as, uh, six letters in support. We have our agent with us, welcome.
Hi, sorry.
Just confirm, we, uh, we don't have any other speakers for this item? Okay, I'm gonna ask my colleagues if they require presentation. I see not. I know you've come down here today, but, uh, it appears we can move forward for decision for you?
Fantastic.
Oh, your name and address for the record?
Craig Ritz of C A R Design Studio with Seven Smith Crescent, agent for the owners.
All right. Thank you. Okay, let's take this into committee. Mr. Niffel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think this is very straightforward. It was before the committee previously and there have been some, uh, further discussions with the planning department and presumably the neighbors. Um, subject to the planning conditions, I think, I think the, uh, the application is quite consistent with the neighborhood. I don't think it raises any difficulties. So I would like to move approval, subject to the planning conditions, uh, which are, first, that the approval only applies to the one-story garden suite and that two, variances two, three, and four regarding the south side setback and separation distance and height of the garden suite are to be developed substantially in accordance with the site plan and elevation drawings and also subject to forestry condition number two.
All right, do I have a second or second by Ms. Sankar Peralta? Thank you. All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. You have your approval.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. I welcome our chair back.
All right, let me just pull up item thirteen, eight Hilltop Road. This is an application for a new multiplex building and laneway suite. We have variances for north side yard setback to a porch, height of exterior main walls, north side yard setback, parking spaces in the front yard, driveway width, parking space width, soft landscaping between the main dwelling and the laneway suite, and height of an ancillary building. On file, we have minutes from February sixth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, addendum letter, survey plans, tree inventory and preservation plan, presentation material, Arbus report, MetroLinks report, Transportation Services report, and the previous agenda package. Our applicant is in front of us, hello? Uh, so we'll start with your name and address, please?
Hi, my name is Michael Goldberg. I'm a principal at Goldberg Group, the planning consulting firm. Twenty ninety-eight Avenue Road in Toronto, M five M four A eight.
And do you have any changes to make to the application today?
I'm sorry?
Do you have any changes to make to the application?
Um, well, notice went out for the revised application. I can say, so the notice that is before you dated, uh, Monday, October twenty-seventh is the current, uh, notice for this matter. And, uh, what I can do, so there's no revisions from that.
Okay, thank you. We, do we have anybody in the audience on this item? No? And we don't appear to have anyone online? All right. Um, do we want a presentation?
No.
Anyone? No? Any questions for the applicant? All right. Unless there's something you want to say, Mr. Goldberg, we'll just go with questions.
Um, I'll just say something short, like the...
Okay.
You know, we, we were deferred the last time we were here uh, to have further discussion with Transportation Services, which I think, as you can see, we, we have had those discussions and we're fine with the conditions of Transportation Services. There was also a concern about a tree that is on a neighbor's property and the design has been altered, um, and it's reflected in the current proposal to protect that tree. Um, we will have to go through the appropriate permitting system, but, uh, um, I don't believe urban forestry is objecting and I don't think the neighbor is, uh, is objecting either.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Niffel, do you have a question?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chairman. I may have answered my own question. Um, the stairway that's at the back is not just a fire escape scare, it's also to provide escape from the various platform balconies, is that correct?
Yes.
And is there any way, um, that your project could be altered so that the staircase itself could be removed and, uh, not be needed? I mean, we've, we've had other multiplexes where there is no external staircase and that's usually welcomed by the community because it's less...
I think it's because it's a multi-story.
Yeah.
Uh, are, are you talking about the, the laneway suite itself or the, uh, the, uh, main building?
The main building.
Yeah, I, I think it's because the, the Ontario Building Code requires those exits because it's a multi-story building.
There are other options, though. There are options to accommodate the second entrance inside. I'm just wondering if you'd explored that, but obviously you don't know that.
Um, I'm not sure, but I, I think that what would happen is it would, uh, for sure, alter the units.
It would.
Uh, yeah, it would alter the units and, uh, um, you, you know, these, these units are designed as, uh, family-sized units and, uh, they want to create as much, uh, space and amenity for the future tenants as possible.
Okay, then, just to clarify, at least on the landings of the external stair, you've got privacy screens, correct?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you say.
On the landings of the private, of the external stair, you have privacy screens?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions for the applicant? No? All right, we'll take it into committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Allison?
Sure, I just provide a few comments. Um, I remember this application the first time it came around. Um, yeah, I, just to Mr. Niffel's comment about the terracing, um, I think it's a bit of a trade-off because, um, they do have this kind of large kind of staircase off the back, but if you look at the way they've done it, they kind of stepped the building, uh, back as you get higher, it's almost like a terracing kind of effect. So while I, I do recognize there may be some concerns with privacy, um, it's, you know, use a bit of mitigation, at least with the massing kind of stepping down, uh, as you get higher. Um, also kind of the larger platform areas are towards the south. So I think if I'm not correct, based of, in the media context, if there, the privacy concern would be more towards the north. Um, but I do, to Mr. Niffel's comment, I did, uh, I think it's worth considering or ensuring that there is a form of privacy, uh, screen there. I think they are noted on the drawings. Um, normally don't like to see, uh, parking, uh, in the front yard, but I think just given the adjacency to Eglington, this is kind of an edge condition on the residential zone and also just the kind of, uh, the, the, the area itself. Um, if you, if you visit the area itself, there's a lot of, uh, driveways, a lot of cars kind of parked on the driveway. So, um, overall, I, Mr. Niffel's kind of comment about the privacy screens aside, I'm, I'm in support of the application.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Chairman, if I might, the, the one other comment I'd like to make, which is a, a compliment back to the applicant. Um, there's been an attempt here to reduce the visual, the impact of the visual massing with the way in which the top floor is configured. It's stepped back, um, and it has, it's still an Anzard-type roof on it. I think that's successful in reducing some of the visual impact of a building this size and I think that's a positive.
Thank you, all right. Um, would someone like to make a motion?
Um, I'm happy to, um, put forward a motion of approval. Madam Chairman, subject to the transportation conditions, I'm not sure if we need the MetroLinks conditions on, in, in this case. I, I looked to the Secretary Treasurer to tell me whether they need to go in. Um, I'd also like to, um, suggest that the building massing be undertaken, um, uh, substantially in accordance with the site plans or the elevation drawings we have before us, for the very reason I mentioned about the, um, about the top floor and that the privacy screening, um, on the external stair be as proposed on the, uh, elevation drawings as well.
All right. Seconder, Mr. Allison?
Yes, see, is it, Mr. Niffel and I are on the same page? I'll, happy to second this motion.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, regarding MetroLinks, I think that is, um, what are they saying exactly? I mean, it's not within the corridor, so...
Yeah, that's what I was...
I think it's more of a...
Advisory?
Notification, yeah, advisory.
Okay.
All right. Okay. No, not yet. All in favor of the motion? That is unanimous. Your application's been approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item fourteen. Three eighty-seven Melrose Avenue, also, Mr. Goldberg, wow. All right, um, let me just get up to speed here. This is an application for a new detached dwelling and a garden suite. Variances are for east side yard setback to rear deck, rear deck height, height of first floor above established grade, building length, lot coverage, driveway width, east side yard setback, and west side yard setback. On file, we have a survey, plans, cover letter, presentation materials, Arbus report, Transportation Services memo, Urban Forestry memo, two letters of objection from three eighty-nine Melrose and four sixty-two Saint Germain Avenue. Um, okay. So, Mr. Goldberg, um, just for the record, if you don't mind, please state your name and address again.
Again, Michael Goldberg from Goldberg Group. Twenty ninety-eight Avenue Road, uh, in Toronto, M five M four A eight.
Okay, and I believe we have somebody here in the audience on this item? Thank you. Um, so if you could, please give us a brief presentation on the, on the application?
Sure. Um, I'm gonna start with the person in attendance because I've had a chance, I was pleased to receive her, uh, cor, I just received her correspondence this morning, which is fine. Um, and we had a conversation before the meeting started here. So there was three aspects of Ms. Babancio's, uh, comments that I can address directly. Uh, one, um, affects the, one of the variances, I think, quite positively. I think it was actually a very good suggestion of Ms. Babacchio. So in the back, we have an upper, I call it a landing, but it's all part of the same deck from a zoning perspective. So we have an upper deck, which is the landing, which is just the space to get out of the house. Then there's seven risers down to a larger, what's called a lower deck. And then that lower deck currently sits two risers above the adjacent grade. And Ms. Babacchio's, um, suggestion was, can you not just have a few more risers and just land on the ground? And you could have an at-grade patio? And I can express to committee, we're fine with that. I think it's a great suggestion. Um, uh, so what that does to variance number two is it eliminates words. So as you see at the very end, the last sentence of variance number two, it says the proposed deck is, and then starts the word, located five point four meters from the rear main wall and is one point eight meters high off the ground, uh, one point eight five meters. So the words located five point four meters from the rear wall, rear main wall, and it is, can be struck out. So that the sentence would now read, the proposed rear deck is one point eight five meters high above the ground, and that's the landing. So I, I think that's a, a positive move. Ms. Babacchio also talks about, um, um, wanting to have a fence and it's always been the intention of having a solid six-foot-high, whatever the bylaw permits, privacy fence along the west side. So that's no problem. And in terms of drainage, I, I'm gonna say a few things. Um, we are required by the building permit process to demonstrate that drainage is contained wholly on our site, that it doesn't drain onto others. I have had that conversation with Ms. Bab, uh, Ms. Babacchio, but I'm also happy to show her, before we apply to, for a building permit, um, what those drainage plans are to give her additional comfort. It's a neighborly thing to do and there's no problem in, in doing that. So, uh, I don't know if that needs to be a condition, but, uh, I'll leave that up to the committee. But we, I am undertaking that my client will do that. Um, there's one last issue that was raised in terms of a Siberian elm in the back of the adjacent property. And, um, it's not a minor variance issue because this is an as-of-right, um, garden suite. There's no variances associated with the garden suite, but, um, it is a building permit issue. So I've also said to Ms. Babacchio that, you know, before we apply for a building permit for the garden suite, um, we will ensure that whatever foundation, like, we have no intention of taking that Siberian elm down or to, or, or seriously or profoundly entering it. By technical bylaw language, we'll have to apply for an entry permit because of the proximity to it, but we can do with helicopiles, um, um, the foundation, because there's no basement of that, uh, of that, uh, garden suite uh, so that, um, all the roots are, of that tree are not disturbed. And we have no trouble doing that, no trouble showing those plans to, um, Ms. Babacchio before a building permit, because I can't say, standing here today, whether a building permit will be applied for, for the garden suite at the same time as the main house. It might be built later, uh, it might be built at the same time. So aside from that, in terms of the other remaining variances, um, of this home, I think they're all pretty straightforward and I'm, I think I'm just gonna say to committee, I'd be happy to answer any question you might have in relation to them. Thank you very much.
Good timing, all right. Mr. Niffel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Could you clarify the change that you're making again? I'm, I'm trying to figure out if you can make do without variance number two altogether.
We need variance number two.
The, the idea is, the, your neighbor's suggestion is that you come out on the platform and you add a few more stairs and then you don't, the lower platform's right on grade. Is that correct?
Yes, the lower platform is right on grade, but let me just check the plans.
So if I understand what you're saying...
We're allowed to project two point five meters from the house. Um, and I just wanna see whether that element, the landing element, is compliant with that. It is compliant with that, but it is also higher. Let me just see here. Yes, it's, it's higher and it's only unper, permitted to be one point two meters above grade and it's one point eight meter, eight-five meters above grade. So we need the variance for the landing because of its height, not because of the extent to which it extends.
Then the, the proposed re, rewording, I don't, you've got the rewording to mean the proposed, why don't we say landing, is located five point four meters from the rear main wall.
Yes, so, so, I'm terribly hard of hearing in one ear.
Oh, I'm sorry, and I'm not speaking into the microphone, so I'm... Well, I, and I, I'm guilty too, I'm not speaking into the mic.
So, so it says here, um, in a residential zone category, the level of the floor of a platform such as a deck or balcony permitted in accordance with, and it's this part, above or located at or below the first story, which is, it is, of the residential building, other than an apartment, may be no higher than point, one point two meters above grade. So the truth is, that's, that's what it speaks to because this deck being at the main living level, the main living level is one point eight five meters above grade. So to permit the landing to go down, um, you need the pro, the, the last sentence would read, the proposed rear deck is one point eight five meters high above the ground. Does that answer your question?
It does, thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Mr. Allison?
Uh, it may, this may be something for committee, but I, I don't think the bylaw is being, uh, interpreted correctly. Uh, my understanding is the, the purpose of the variance is to allow anything above that certain height uh, would still be permitted, provided it doesn't extend beyond two point five meters from the building. It's, it's a combination of height and projection where the variance is required. It's not a limitation on the height of the platform. It just states if the platform goes beyond two point five meters, there, then a height variance is required. So, uh, and I think amending the, I don't, I don't think the, the amendment really does anything. In fact, it, it, it causes a bit of, it, what it essentially does is just says that the proposed deck is a certain height, but then it doesn't provide a, a projection. What it, what it'd be inclined to do is approve, uh, but I, I would, the, the site plan's not very good. It doesn't really, um, show the extent of the upper platform. It's, it's probably best described on the ground floor plan because there's some dimensions. One point eight meter projection of the landing and the stair. Um, so I, I would be happy to, if, if it, I don't think it needs approval at all, but if you, just to err on the side of caution, if there was approval given, I would just tie it to the ground floor plan. I suspect the examiner would just disregard the variance because it's not needed, at least, I understand.
May I just add, the ground floor plan minus the lower deck?
Right.
I think the, the issue here is, the solution is a good solution.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's how do you word it?
So how do we make it happen? Yeah. And I, I, I'm, I, I don't see the benefit of the reworded variance, which is one of, I was wondering if it could be, um, removed entirely, but Mr. Allison's quite correct, um, it has to do with the distance as well as the height.
I, I don't think you need the variance, but I don't wanna be responsible for a missed, uh...
Misinterpretation.
But, um, I, I would be com, I would be comfortable, uh, even with the, like, even if you were to approve it based on the, the existing wording and the, tie it to the ground floor plan, I, I would be comfortable, uh, taking, uh, the applicant's word that, you know, he'll arrange, you know, whatever they decide to with the lower deck, whether they have it a few feet, two feet off the ground or whether they bring it right down to grade, I, I'm supportive, I think, either way.
I think you were referring to taking it down to grade, correct?
Yes.
Removing the lower deck.
Where you see on the, where you see on the ground floor plan says seven risers, there would have to be nine risers. So, really... So, really, it wouldn't even be shown on the plans anymore, other than interlocking stones on the ground.
Right. Could we make it subject to a condition that the steps leading from the, are we calling it a deck?
Or one way to do it is, subject to the rear deck only being, I think it's called, I call it the landing, but I think it's called the upper deck on the ground floor plan. Let me just go there for sure. Yeah, subject to the deck comprised only on the landing and stair structure going down to the ground as shown on the ground floor plan.
Except it's not shown on the ground floor plan, is it?
I'm sorry?
It's not shown on the ground floor plan, because right now, on the ground floor plan, it's showing...
Or you could say, "The landing as shown on the ground floor plan with no lower deck."
Maybe that's an easier way to say it. Sure.
You know what, what about, if you left the variance, because I'm agreeing with Mr. Allison.
Yeah, I think you should leave it.
You probably, it'll probably come back and bite us if we take it away. And I don't, I don't think it says anything anyway. What if instead, you said that the, the lower deck, as indicated on the ground floor plan, will be constructed at grade? That's what...
But it's not, not a deck, right? It won't be a deck, then. It would just be stairs going down to patio.
I'm just using the term, because that's what it's called on here. So, that, I said, "The lower, the lower deck, as shown on the site, on the grade, will be constructed at grade," or "will be a patio at grade," if you wish.
Anyone else? Anyone else got a way of writing it?
Maybe we can't tie it down.
Yeah, we can tie it down. There's a way to tie it down. Sorry, Mr. Goldberg, what was the last version you had of that?
Yeah, the, the approval could be, "Subject to the upper landing be constructed in accordance with the ground floor plan, and the lower deck is eliminated."
Or accept that the lower deck is eliminated, something like that? Okay. Can we write that down?
Well, just to note that the plan shows seven risers.
Yeah, so...
Is that still the intention?
No.
You got a picture from the zoning examiner. Are they going to understand?
Could we not just limit the projection? He's shown on the plan as a projection of 1.8. He's allowed 2.5, so just limit it to a projection of 2.5 meters.
But that doesn't deal with the removing the lower...
No, but you have to capture the height.
Yeah.
From the ground.
Right, so I'd just say, you could approve variance number, is it two? We're talking, yeah, variance number two.
I think we do.
But just note that, it says, "The proposed rear deck is located," it gives a projection, 5.49 meters. Just change that, you can write to a maximum of 2.5 meters. The deck doesn't project beyond 1.6 right now, so he's, like I said, I'm 99% sure this variance is not needed, because he's within 2.5 meters projection, so he can go to whatever height he wants.
I guess it's just, how do we capture that there's no longer a lower deck, and there would be nine risers going down to the ground, as opposed to seven risers and a lower deck?
But, but instead of trying to figure out how many risers it is, because if we're wrong, we're going to create a problem.
Yeah, true.
Could we not just say that the landing, whatever we call it, the upper landing, provides access from the great room to grade?
Okay.
And it's however...
I might limit the projection.
Pardon me?
Just limit the projection of it. That's all you need. You can approve the height, limit the, it's the projection that the bylaw is trying to protect.
Okay, okay. I'm game for it.
How do we word it? Subject to, all right. Subject to.
Yeah, I would just change the word, "The proposed deck shall not project more than 2.5 meters from the rear main wall."
And shall provide access to the ground.
If you want to reference the plan, I think he's got it set at 1.8, but it's an as-of right. So, even if you want, they want to change it after the fact, the examiner can't. It's, it's 1.8 meters right now, the upper landing, the projection.
Yeah.
So, just limit the projection on it.
But that doesn't address the stairs going to the ground.
Does he, why not? Because it's a projection of the balcony, so you can have the stairs go down.
Down to the ground.
Yeah. Isn't that part of the deck and the projection? It's within the 1.8-meter projection, the stairs, so it's covered.
No, the...
I think it was for the neighbor.
The 1.85 meters is related to the height.
No, there's a 1.8-meter projection on the ground floor plan of the upper, of the landing.
Yeah.
I just, if I limit the landing, then you can approve the height.
Madam Chair, is there...
Not in chair.
Ma'am?
Does this...
Go ahead.
Ms. Sankar had a question.
Go ahead.
I guess, you know, me sitting on here online and going through this, and we don't do this really with other agents, and I know that we're really trying to help this neighbor. But at this point, do we not feel that this should be taken away or deferred, and have these changes made that's appropriate to address the neighbor's concerns, and then come back to committee? Like, to me, it's not our job to be going through all of this.
No, but I think we're just trying to articulate something that's pretty simple. It's just because we have to put it into zoning language, it's complicated, and we're struggling with it. But I think it's a very simple thing that we're trying to achieve. And it was to the benefit of the neighbor to not have that lower deck. Just take the stairs down to the ground from the upper deck or landing, whatever we're calling it. So, I think we leave in that variance, because we're not sure what impact it might have if we took it out. And then, we just make the, if we make a motion to approve it, then it's subject to a condition that the upper deck project no more than 1.8 meters?
Yeah, that, yeah. That the, the height, or the approved height.
Right. We're fine with that.
Okay.
That the approved height set at a certain amount, state that, and that that height does not exceed 1.8 meters.
Okay.
They can build their platform, they can build their stairs.
Right.
All right. I'm okay with that. Did you...? No. Does somebody want to put that into a motion?
Except this says 1.85, so we're talking about 1.8, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, the height is 1.85, and the...
The projection is 1.8.
And the projection is 1.8.
The projection horizontally is 1.8, the height is 1.85.
Correct, yeah. So, that's what we need to reference.
The 1.85 is already in there, so the, it's the 1.8 we have to...
So, if you, if you alter the wording of the variance, "The proposed deck is located 2.5, 1.8 meters from the rear main wall, and is 1.85 meters high above the ground."
That's, that's what I proposed.
All right, therefore, we're amending variance number two to the wording that "The proposed rear deck is located 1.8 meters from the rear main wall, and is 1.85 meters high above the ground."
That would be perfect.
Can we call it the upper landing, because that's what it's called on the plan? Otherwise, it's going to be totally confused. Because the word "deck" refers on the plan to the bigger...
Well, this is, this is bylaw language.
Yeah.
So, I don't think you should mix, if you want to put that in as a condition, but the, but the variance should be bylaw language.
We could say that, "Subject to the condition that the proposed rear deck is the upper landing," or whatever you called it, upper...
If I may, I'm maybe inclined just to leave it, because deck would apply to platform and stairs and, under the bylaw. If you start changing it to platform, then it might not encapsulate...
And I don't want to confuse the zoning examiner
Really?
with our dabbling, sorry? Nothing. We are, we're just amending variance two, as we stated, but we're not doing anything else. We've decided we're not going to do anything else. Okay? Are we good? Oh, that's true. That is true. All right, phew. That was all part of your presentation. All right, let's hear from the, from the neighbor. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. My name is Artis Babatsko, the homeowner to the west of 387 Melrose. So, my address is 389 Melrose Avenue, North York, postcode Mary, 5 Mary, 1 Zebra 6.
All right. Go ahead.
So, I'm just following up with respect to the letter that I had submitted last week. I don't know that you actually got it until today, just voicing concerns. Not necessarily objecting to the development, but wanted to make sure that they had been acknowledged. So, in speaking to Mr. Goldberg, he explained that the garden suite access would be, one of my concerns, would be between our two homes. And my concern is that it's a small area, we have basement windows, and I wanted to ensure that tenants accessing the garden suite, we would have privacy and security, so asked for a fence to be built, which he acknowledged would be from the front of the house all the way through, through the back terrace at the maximum permitted height. He acknowledged that, yes, he would see that. So, again, I wanted to make sure that that was actually followed through, or will be followed through on. The terrace, thank you very much for acknowledging that, I was calling it a terrace, that it would be dropped, because again, I'm not sure if you're aware, but 387 Melrose is uphill to us. So, we are downhill. So, the water flows down, I had water concerns, I had privacy concerns. I acknowledge that there is going to be a high platform, but it's really just a pathway to get down to the lower level of the deck. Major concern really is water, water migration. The elevations that were submitted didn't show any eaves troughs on the west elevation, any downsprouts, not on the front of the house as well. I don't want there to be a future conflict with the neighbor over water. I want to make sure that the water is diverted front and back, it's not dumped onto my property. So, I don't, I don't want a wet basement, I don't want a flooded backyard, and I want to make sure that because of the grade happens that 387 is here and 389 is here, that it's not coming to us. So, I would like to make sure that the pathway, that it's, in my letter, I had asked for swales, infiltration, to make sure that that is documented, because again, it's, it's not the developer, it's the neighbors that end up having to deal with this process years down the road. So, again, I think the other questions and concerns that I had had over privacy and light, we've addressed that with the deck. The large tree in the back is an issue. I wasn't really aware of it until I looked, read through the entire arborist report yesterday, and then saw the note from the urban forestry department that they had an objection to it, because we bought our house 23 years ago because it has mature trees, and we wanted to keep them that way. So, I am concerned that any excavation, you know, Mr. Goldberg had mentioned these helicopiles. I don't know how that is addressed, but I do want to, I don't want a tree to die because of that excavation. And if it does die, or if it dies a slow painful death, who then maintains for the trimming of the tree and the eventual removal of the tree if the tree dies as a result of this garden suite? The tree is, has circumference of over seven feet, it is a big Siberian elm. We enjoy the, you know, everything that it provides to us. So, I did want to make sure that that elm and anything that is how it is approached is, is, were consulted, because we have not been consulted to date on it at all. So, those were really, I appreciate the fact, speaking to Mr. Goldberg ahead of time, that the terrace has been addressed, that the fencing has been addressed. I do ask that the water be addressed, and the drainage, and the infiltration, and all of those things. I don't know where it is addressed, but I do want to make sure that that doesn't create a problem, and the tree. So, thank you very much for your time and your consideration. If you have any questions.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the speaker? No, I think we're good. Thank you very much. Mr. Goldberg.
One brief comment. The memorandum you have from Mr. Bostock of Urban Forestry does not object to the minor variances. It's more like an advisory comment, that when a building permit is applied for, for the garden suite, he goes on through in an analysis and provides advisory comments. We've taken note of that, and that will influence the design of the garden suite for building permit purposes. But he's quite clear, he does not object to the minor variances, because the garden suite is not attracting any variances whatsoever.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's take this into committee. Mr. Allison?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, I think it's a, it's a very reasonable application. I'm glad to see that there's been some discussion with the neighbor. A lot of the concerns with respect to drainage, eaves troughs, all that, I understand, they're all developed at the building permit stage. So, if they were to receive approval through the planning process, they would then have to make an application, as I understand it, to Toronto Building, and then a specific examiner for building code would examine to make sure that it's compliant with building code. So, but always good to bring these matters up early on. The sooner that they can be addressed in the design process, I think, you know, mitigates, you know, risk down the road of having to adjust or reduce things. I'm happy to make a motion, if my colleagues don't have any comments on this. The one concern I did have was with respect to the platform at the rear. I'm glad to see that amendment made to the variance that we have. So, if there's no other comment, I'll make a motion to approve the application as amended with urban forestry condition, I believe, number two. Read the, sorry? Oh, yes, the amendment, yeah. The amendment is, the same variance, but the proposed rear deck will be located 1.8 meters from the rear main wall, and it will be 1.85 meters high above the ground. So, that's the amended variance. That's my motion.
All right. Thank you. Do we have a second or? Mr. Nipfel. All in favor? All in favor? Sorry, didn't catch that. That is three in favor and opposed. Ms. Sankar is opposed. All right, with that, your application has been approved, as amended. All right, we are on to item 15. 2775 Duffren Street. To legalize and maintain the existing ancillary structure in the rear yard of the property and surface parking. We have variances for a number of parking spaces and south side yard setback. On file, we have a survey, plans, cover letter, supporting material, transportation review memo, and a counselor letter. Do we have our applicant with us?
Good afternoon to you, Madam Chair. Sal Creamy, address 2572 Egerton Avenue West.
All right, and you are the agent?
Yes, that is correct, Madam Chair.
All right. Okay, I think we do have a neighbor online, so any changes to make to the application before we start?
No, no opposition has been expressed, so surprised. I assume maybe it's a neighbor in support, because I have been made aware of that. The application is to legalize and maintain an existing condition dating back to 2009 for the committee's awareness, but I guess maybe it's pertinent to hear from the neighbor, and I'll have a chance to respond.
Okay, sounds good. Could we have the neighbor who is online? Hello?
Oh, sorry, am I unmuted?
You are.
Oh, sorry. I'm just looking for clarification. What exactly are they asking for?
Sorry?
It's not clear.
Oh, yes. Let's start with your name and address.
Oh, sorry. Uh, name is Ralph Petringer, 11 Top View Court.
All right. Thank you. You know what? We'll let the applicant do a very brief presentation. I believe he submitted one. Or he's got photos.
Uh, if it's just regarding the amendment for, uh, not enough parking, that's fine. I'm just not sure what the, uh, what the actual application is.
Yeah.
Cause that, that shed, that shed did go up out of nowhere. It is an eyesore, but it is what it is at this point.
All right. Let's let the applicant respond.
Uh, thank you through you, Madam Chair. So the application is not for that temporary CCAN and associated temporary fence that's on the screen now. It actually pertains to the prefabricated metal shed that's at the rear of the building. Um, and that permit cover letter was procured by the owner, uh, who, who has owned and occupied and occupied and operated this, uh, specific home hardware for over 30 years now. But that, uh, specific prefabricated shed that's on the screen now was purchased in 2008 and erected between 2008 and 2009. To the, the, the owner was unaware of the requirement for a building permit because it was a pre-engineered, prefabricated and pre-assembled structure that they required a building permit. And as such, variances for it were not caught because a building permit was not applied for. It wasn't until several years later, I think, starting in teen, where by law enforcement caught it and resulted to where we are today, legalizing and maintaining it. And that pertains, the, the only variance associated with that shed would be the south side yard setback. The neighbor that, uh, that would, the neighbor that is to the south, the used car dealership, is in support of the shed and the associated variance. And the parking is, as I've stated, an existing condition. Store has operated with the number of spaces provided since its inception. And then further, um, as I stated in the cover letter and, uh, as I alluded to at the start of the presentation, the, um, temporary shipping container along with the associated temporary fence will be removed within the year. And, uh, approximate for their five parking spaces will open up. But it goes to say that we're moving towards a society where we're trying to get away from, from vehicle dependence. The store is located on the main.
You're breaking up a bit on your, on your phone. Hello?
Direct access to both higher order and lower order public transit. And, uh, it's been well received by the community in its current state as.
Oh, now we lost you altogether. Hello? Mr. Creamy? We can't hear you.
Sorry, Madam Chair. I accidentally muted myself. My sincere apologies.
That's okay.
Um, but yeah, I think in closing, as I was saying, we're moving towards a, a less vehicle dependent society. It's on a major avenue and, uh, it's been well received by the community for over 30 years, as alluded to by the counselor, um, as it is a cornerstone of the community, the store. And that is the essence and inception of this application that is before you for consideration. And I hope that clears up the, uh, the neighbor's, uh, inquiries.
I'm having trouble understanding which shed we're talking about here.
The one that's on the screen now, Madam Chair.
Is it the one that looks like a barn?
Behind the white car.
Okay. And that currently, it's the south side yard setback to that. So on the left, I take it?
Uh, directly behind.
Oh.
To the rear of that structure.
Okay.
So your view now is looking south.
Okay. All right. Well, let's have the, uh, the resident back to see if he understands the application now and see if he has any further comments. If we could.
Creamy?
Yes, hi.
Yeah, perfect. So, so just to clarify, um, so you're going to be removing that shed to the left and those, and those shipping containers as well in the next year?
Is that what you understood?
That would be good.
Okay. So that, we'll ask the applicant that question and any other can, questions or comments?
No, that would be the, uh, that'd be the primary thing because those shipping containers are an eyesore as well. Not even sure if those are even allowed because those showed up about a year ago and they're, you know, I'm just looking at my security cameras and it, it looks like we live in a shipping yard. So if he, if they're going to be moving those, uh, shipping containers, that would be very much appreciated.
All right. We'll let the applicant address that. Thank you very much.
Of course, through you, Madam Chair. So both sheds pictured on the screen now are not proposed to be removed. These are at the rear of the property. The shipping container I think we're speaking about is at the front of the property. There was another picture on file which shows the shipping container and the temporary fence. And that is planned to be removed within the year. Yes, that is correct, as I stated. But the sheds that are pictured now before you, those are what we're here, the one is what we're here to legalize and maintain. And that's the one that looks like a barn. And the smaller utility shed is allowed as of right and is not proposed to be removed.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay. Any questions? The applicant. Mr. Nipfel.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Now I'm confused. Can we go back to the picture of the, of the shed that's here? One more picture back.
The ones in the south? Lot line?
Yeah. That one. Yeah. Can you see this picture from where you are? To the applicant?
Through you, Madam Chair. The picture that I see still has the white Tesla in it.
Yeah, okay. So the, the, I guess it's a frame asbestos can, or, uh, enclosure. You're saying that's not going to be removed?
None of the sheds pictured in that picture will be removed. So there was another picture we had which showed the front of the store with a shipping container and temporary fence. If maybe the, we can scroll to the other pictures and we can be clear about what's being removed. So it's not this picture. It's going to be the picture that was previously shown on. If, uh, the assisting staff could go to that picture.
That's the one that's going to be removed? Which is at the front of the store?
I understood the neighbor's concern to be that, um, temporary shed that's at the back, but maybe I'm wrong because he said it was, it was a real mess. This, to be quite honest, isn't, doesn't look all that bad, but the, the frame shed at the back is in pretty rough shape. I, I.
But I don't believe that's what the variances are about.
No, the variances are about the other, the, if you look at the site plan.
The barn.
There's a, there's a site plan that you've submitted and there's a proposed shed. That's the one that's before us, the one that's the closest to the property line. And then there's a, a, um, an asbestos shed, which I thought was the one the neighbor was concerned with. And then, I don't know anything about those trailers. And then there's a trailer at the front, which I think he was concerned with as well. I don't have any difficulty with understanding what it is you're proposing to do with this shed at the back. I was not clear about what else is going besides that shed. So you say it's the one at the front?
That's going.
Next to the parking? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I guess if we're going to refer to the, through you, Madam Chair, if we're going to refer to the site plan, what I was referencing, and sorry if I'm complicating this, I'm trying to make this as clear as possible for your understanding. And on the site plan, at the front of the building off of Duffren Street, there's a trailer, which is actually a CCAN and then temporary metal fence. This is all what's slated to be removed within the year. And the only thing of the proposal that is slated to be removed. Both the proposed shed and the existing framed shed, that will remain.
Okay. Thank you. That's clear.
All right. Thank you. I think we can take this into committee unless there's any other questions? No? All right. Anyone? Oh. Ms. Sankar? Go ahead.
Yeah, no. I mean, unless there are any other questions, I, I won't mind making a motion because I do find that, um, the agent explained this really well. The photo showed sort of everything that was needed and I hope that it did answer the questions, um, that came from, um, the neighboring, um, resident. But I see that transportation is, you know, in, uh, support of this. There's no concerns around the parking. And I also see that, which is very rare, we have a counselor support as well. I, I feel like I'm in favor of this application. And if I can, I could make a motion if no one has anything further.
I think you are quite welcome to make a motion.
All right. So then with that, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, this application. And, um, I, I guess it's, that's as is.
All right. Thank you very much. Do we have a second or? Mr. Nipfel. All in favor? That is unanimous. The application has been approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Okay. Item 17? Oops, 16. 17? Oh, right. Don't know my own notes. 17. 201 Tempo Avenue. This is an application to alter the existing place of worship and construct a new front main entrance. The variances are for gross floor area of a place of worship. On file, we have a survey, plans, applicants, photographs and community planning comments. Our applicant is with us or online?
Yes, hello. Good afternoon, everyone. Yeah, I'm here.
And your name and address, please?
My name is Ali Razal Zahedi and my address is 7250 Unit, uh, Killa Street, Unit 296, L4K1Z8.
Thank you very much. Uh, we don't have anybody here on this application, I don't believe. Does this committee want a presentation? No, I don't think we need a presentation, um, unless there was something you want to tell us.
It just, uh, I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to speak here. Just a quick note, uh, our proposed changes focus on improving safety and comfort of parishioners. Uh, the door we are adding here is primarily to protect parishioners from harsh weather conditions, ensuring shelter from elements. And at the same time, this door is designed as a part of landscaping, adding beauty and enhancing to overall appearance of the property. Uh, this addition will not remove or obstruct the existing curb. It will not affect any parking spaces. And the, uh, uh, actually it's inside the property and the total gross floor, uh, floor area addition is approximately 60 square meter. So we believe, uh, this adjustment is essential to well-being of parishioners and will also contribute positively to the site aesthetics. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Any questions for the applicant? No? All right. We'll take this into committee. Thank you. Mr. Nipfel.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'd like to move approval of this, an extremely minor application. The proposal enhances the building and enhances the community. And I'd like to move approval without condition.
Thank you. And Ms. Sankar, are you willing to second that motion? Thank you very much. All right. All in favor of the application? That is unanimous. The application has been approved.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. All right. Item 1861 Banff Road. This is an application to alter the existing dwelling by adding a ground floor addition and a second story addition. The variances are for floor space index, main pedestrian entrance height, vehicle entrance through front main wall, rear deck area and height above grade, north side yard setback to the rear deck, rear deck height above established grade, north and south side yard setbacks to rear deck and south side yard setback to the addition. On file, we have a survey, plans, site plan, site photos, urban forestry memo and a late community planning staff report. Do we have our applicant?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, I'm here.
Hi. Could you speak up a bit? We can barely hear you.
Okay. My name is Pino Lovacchia of Lovacchia Designs, 1348 Ogden Avenue, Mississauga.
Just to clarify, staff, can you hear that okay? Okay. Is it possible for you to get closer to your microphone because it's not picking up here in the chamber?
Right up against, yeah.
Hello? It sounds like you're behind a closed door.
Can you hear me?
No, we can't. Uh, we, like, we can hear you barely, but not very well. It's, it sounds like you're, you're very muffled.
Can you hear me now?
No. It's the same. I mean, I can barely hear you. But I don't think a committee or staff are able to pick up your voice.
Can you hear me now?
No. It's the same. Do you want to phone in? Sorry?
Good.
All right. Perhaps we will, uh, mute you and bring, we'll do one more application, on off?
Madam Chair, perhaps the applicant can log off?
Oh, log off.
Try it again. And then we'll, we'll come back to him. We'll just move on to the next one. If that's okay with you, Madam Chair.
Yep. That's fine with me. So if you could log off and log back in, and in the meantime, we'll deal with the next application. Sorry? Will? Yes, I do. Okay. So item 19 is 46 Mason Boulevard. And I'm leaving because I have a conflict. Mr. Allison's going to take my place?
Yes. I'm going to do it from here.
Okay.
My notes are right here. Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay. We're on item 1946 Mason Boulevard. The purpose of this application is a proposal to construct a gazebo in the rear yard. One variance required on file material from the applicant and seven letters in support. We've got our agent in person. Welcome, sir. Uh, your name and address for the record.
Uh, my name is Colin LeVere and I am the homeowner at 46 Mason Boulevard, North York, M5M3C8.
All right. I just confirm. You, there's some other, uh, individuals, uh, in your party today here?
Yeah, my wife is here.
Okay.
Diane. And my contractor, Lisandro.
Okay. And staff, we don't have anybody in line, online. Okay. I'm going to ask my colleagues if they require a presentation.
Sure.
Or, I, I see heads shaking. All right. Uh, if it's all right with you, we can take this into committee for decision?
Yep.
Pretty straightforward, I think. Okay. Let's, uh, move into committee. Mr. Nipfel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is very straightforward. It's a small gazebo in the backyard. The variance request is extremely minor. I can't see a downside to this. I'd like to move approval without condition.
Yes. See, uh, second by Ms. Sankar Peralta. Thank you all in favor. Okay, that's unanimous. You have your approval, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Yeah. And thanks for coming down in person. Uh, well, welcome, uh, Miss Madam Chair. Caston back.
I know. So fast. All right. So we'll go back to item 18 and see if we can hear Mr. Lovacchia. It's cold in here, huh? It's chilly. Well. No, I'm okay. I have my coat if it's not bad. Oh, did you? Oh, really? That's hilarious. No, I've got a coat. Yeah, I'm fine. Not that cold. Just chilly. Do we have, has he logged back in? And we've unmuted him? Okay. Let's try it again. Hello?
Can you hear me? Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, but you'll need to talk a little louder.
Okay. I will.
That's better. Okay. I don't even remember what we said. I think I introduced the application. First of all, do you have any changes to make to the application today?
Um, we just wanted to note that, uh, we have received the forestry comments. And we will work with, uh, with an arborist. Just to look at possible solutions on how we can, uh, revise the porch. Is to look at possible solutions on how we can uh, revise the porch, so as not to have a foundation.
Okay, and do we have the community, can we put the community planning report up? Because it was a late one? Sorry, there were? Okay. Have you seen the community planning staff report?
Yes. Yes, we, we, we made changes on advice, on, on the advice of, of the staff on some of the items. So we have made those changes.
Uh, so you haven't made changes to the um, the public meeting notice is still indicating what you originally requested. So are you saying that you're making the changes that are in the community?
Staff recommended these changes and yes, we did make these changes, or we will be making the changes to the drawings.
Alright, let's just go through each of the variances, just to make sure that we're all on the same page. Variance one, I don't see a change to that, recommended by staff. Variance two, no change. That was for the main pedestrian entrance? No?
No change, no.
And three was building depth, no change.
No change.
Uh, the vehicle entrance, variance four, through the front wall, no change.
No change, no.
Okay, so then we get to variance five. Uh, maximum area of a platform, so you're amending this from twenty point two-five? To eighteen point six-seven?
Yes.
Okay. And then uh, variance number six. Uh, revising this from minimum north side yard setback of the platform. From point eight-eight meters to point nine-nine meters?
Yes.
Okay. And variance seven, eliminate variance seven for the south side yard setback of the platform, is that correct?
Yes, we brought in the platform so that we comply with the side yard now.
And you're eliminating variance eight for uh, the south side yard setback?
Yes.
Okay.
We made the changes necessary so that the uh, the as-of-rate setback will apply now.
Okay, and the one other staff comment, I think, unless there's any more down below on the page, but it says that uh, to provide permanent opaque privacy screening along the north and south side of the proposed elevated rear platform. You're in agreement with that?
Yes, we are.
Okay, great. Alright, um, do we have this eighteen, we don't have anybody here on this one. Do we want a presentation committee or? Do you have any questions?
I, I have difficulty with one of the other variances and perhaps I could just raise it and see if the applicant?
Sure.
And it's um, it's variance number two, which is the elevation of the lowest point of the main entrance through the front wall and it's one point five-two meters above the established grade. The bylaw requires one point two or limits it at one point two. Right next door, there is a house that has its entrance right at grade and pardon me. I'm speaking about um, variance number two, um, which is the elevation of the lowest point of the main pedestrian entrance through the front wall at one point five-two meters above established grade, whereas the bylaw limits that to one point two meters. Um, I have some difficulty with the entrance being that high, particularly given of, I believe, the property immediately next door, the entrance is right at grade. The one on the other side is higher, but um, I, I'd like to know if you made any attempt at all to produce um, a pedestrian entrance that was closer to grade, which in this case, I think would be an appropriate response.
Uh, we were trying to balance the number of steps on the interior and the exterior of the, of the house, so that's why we went with that landing as-is. I mean, it's something that we could obviously look at, for sure.
So they have what?
As, as it stands, I, I'm not able to support variance number two. I just, I wanted to let you know that and I just wanted to know if there was any background evidence that would uh, change my mind and, and it would appear that, that there isn't, so thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? No? Alright. Mr. Allison?
I was just gonna ask if there was uh, any planning rationale uh, to support the uh, the drive entrance through the front wall. Um, if there's any discussion with planning about that. I, I see they didn't bring it up, but I'm just curious to see what their comments were. Uh, is that, can the applicant, did the applicant hear that?
Yeah, I'd just like to note that, I mean, the, the house next door has the same condition and they have a garage at the front wall of the house. And this is a very common style of, of architecture that's prominent in that neighborhood now. There's numerous, numerous houses that, that are, are designed in the same, in a similar way, with a garage at the front.
Okay, so you, you did look in the immediate area, uh, just to kind of take that um, that direction on the integral garage?
I, I mean, if you go to any one of the streets surrounding it, especially Sudan, there are so many houses that resemble what we're proposing.
Okay, yeah, fair enough. Okay, no further questions.
Alright, thank you. Um, ready to take it into committee? I mean, I, I hear your concerns about the main pedestrian entrance and the, the vehicle entrance through the front wall, but it is a existing house that they're renovating, so I guess there are some constraints and I believe that, you know, they did work with planning to um, revise some of the variances and they have, we see this often in a brand-new house with an integral garage where they balance the number of steps at the front and the ones interior to the, on the landing up to the main floor, that's very common, we see that all the time. Um, so I, it doesn't really concern me too much, but um, I will just say that and let anyone else make comments.
My, my concerns are all, I believe, related. Uh, the integral garage is in large part the reason why the entrance is so high above grade. It's also the reason why the back deck is so high in the air. Um, and even with the reduced size that the planning department is recommended, it's still, I would argue, a visual intrusion into the rear yard for adjacent neighbors, so I'm, I have real difficulty with this application, but the the concerns are all related, one led to the other, led to the other. It's not that they're three totally independent things, they're all part of the same, same issue, which is lifting the building up.
Alright. Ms. Sankar?
Um, for you, Madam Chair, if there's nothing else, I, I could make a motion. If my colleagues have nothing more to add?
Yeah, I think, I think you could make a motion.
Alright, so.
Mr. Allison, did you have anything else?
Yeah, I was just wanting to see if Mr. Allison wanted to say anything further.
I was just cross-checking some numbers, uh, some comments from other committee members, but please go ahead.
Yeah, so if there's nothing further, I, I just wanted to say that, you know, um, in essence, I, I accept the explanations provided by um, the agent here today. I did hear my colleague and his concerns around um, item number two, but I'm also persuaded by the fact that, um, you know, uh, the agent has uh, tried to work with uh, planning um, staff and meeting their concerns. I'm persuaded by the comments made by you, Madam Chair, and I'm also persuaded by um, knowing that this kind of meets the character of the neighborhood and also in looking at the pictures and seeing that it's such a tinier version sandwiched between much larger houses with the same kinds of structures that actually overlook into their own privacy, I just feel um, that that eliminates any concerns that I might have of my own. So I'm gonna put forward a motion to approve this application. I'm going to um, make it subject to um, forestry, I believe it's condition number one. And of course, it's the amended application and make it subject to um, the uh, latest staff report that had come in where they met all of the recommendations and that permanent opaque uh, privacy screening along the north and south sides of the proposed elevated rear platform is implemented as per the October thirtieth staff report. So that's my motion, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a second or of that motion? No?
No, I, I'd be willing to support a motion. I, I just picked up on Mr. Nipfel's comment about the main pedestrian entrance height. Uh, you know, the as-of-rate's one point two, they're asking for one point five. I looked at the, he's right, the, the immediate neighbors, the, the entrance is right at grade. Uh, you look across the street, you look at some of the higher entrances, you start counting the number of steps, it's about one point two max. So I think to allow one point five on this street, because there's still a mix, right? It's not all walk-ups, there's, there's still a mix, there's a lot of, actually the predominating height is probably lower than one point two, lower than the as-of-rate, so I'm just, I, I don't really see any instance on the street where you have an entrance higher than one point two, so I, I, I think that's a minor adjustment to make, uh, to bring it in line uh, with the four tests, but um, that's, that's why I wouldn't support the motion. It's variance number two. We're talking about point-three meter difference, about a foot of the front, dropping the front door. Another step, step and a half.
I, I just wanted to share that there, they, they've indicated that the next-door neighbor has sort of the same um, type of uh, structure. So would that be something we would be willing to take into consideration?
Yeah, that's, I, that's what I was looking at. Um, I, if you look at the bottom of the door sill, it's, it's still above the midline of the garage, still lower uh, in comparison, this is actually higher, so I look, I, I, I would say that the neighbors is sort of a good example of what an as-of-rate would look like at one point two. You count the number of steps, it's an extra step, one step's about point-three meters, that's the difference between one point two to one point five, in my mind. So, I, I, I know we're just harp, like, I, I'm not gonna lose sleep over this, but I, I mean, if we're if I, if I had to choose between two, the two motions, what's more closely aligned with a four test, I'd, I'd go with uh, without number two.
Okay, I think, uh, Mr. Nipfel, did you want to say something?
No, I, I was just going to mention, I don't know if, Nadine, if you heard earlier, but the property on the other side has gray, has its entrance right at grade, doesn't have any steps at all, you walk right in.
Agree, agree, but I, I think Ms. Sankar's point, and I agree with her on this, um, it's an existing dwelling where they're renovating it and doing an addition to it and it, and the ultimate of it is still lesser than the massing of either house on either side regardless of the main pedestrian entrance. Like, you're not gonna have as big a building and therefore I'm willing to um, give in on the main pedestrian entrance, I would say.
That's what I was considering, because if we take it back to the photos, just look at the photos and look at their tiny little, in comparison to two seemingly mega homes, I feel like it's a, it's a bit of a compromise and that's what sort of drew me.
And the impact, I think, would be more if it was a brand-new house coming in that, you know,
Yes.
giant in all regards, the way most of them are. Um, so I guess I don't agree with.
Yeah, fair enough. I, I mean, we're talking about a difference of a step.
I know.
I think you can.
And the step could be. Motion is still on the floor, if anybody wishes to second it.
Alright, anyone reconsidering or do we, does that motion die and we start with a new one? Okay. Who was holding out for a second or? So Ms. Sankar would have to remake, make her motion, is that what you're saying? Okay. Well, let's just see if anyone else makes a motion and then.
I'll make a motion, see where it goes. I, I'm gonna make the same motion Ms. uh, Sankar Peralta made, uh, but with the ex, the uh, refusal of variance number uh, two for the main pedestrian entrance height. Uh, but the same, uh, same motion, as amended with urban forestry uh, and the community planning.
Yeah.
Um.
Alright.
Conditions.
Do we have a second or for that motion? Mr. Nipfel seconds that motion and all in favor of that motion? That is two in favor?
And then?
Opposed? I can't vote. Alright. So the application as amended has uh, been approved. In part. Yeah. Alright.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, that concludes our two o'clock, I believe. We did. Oh, oh, sixteen, that will be our first one on four o'clock, yes. So we'll take a break until four o'clock. Alright. Thank you, everybody.
All right, I believe we're ready for the four o'clock session. First of all, we have a deferral to deal with. Item 26, 75 Winston Park Boulevard. Do we have the applicant available? Twenty-six? So, yes? Item twenty-six, are you there? Seventy-five Winston Park Boulevard.
Basma Mohammed Ali, you are muted.
Maybe they don't understand. Item twenty-six, we are dealing with the deferral request. Seventy-five Winston Park Boulevard. I suppose we could come back if we can't make contact. They might not be anticipating going first. Yeah, let's go back to, go back to. We're going to item number sixteen, which was in the two o'clock agenda, but advertised in the public meeting notice for four o'clock. So, we're going to deal with that item first before we move on. So, item sixteen is six sixty-six Briar Hill Avenue. This is an application to construct a new dwelling. We have variances for east side yard setback to the rear deck, height of rear deck and projection, rear deck encroachment into rear yard and east side yard, driveway width, floor space index, east and west side yard setbacks, and percentage of rear soft landscaping. On file, we have survey plans, tree protection plan, arborist report, community planning report, urban forestry memo, updated community planning report, revised plans, letters of objection from two eighty-five and two eighty-seven Hillhurst Boulevard. Do you have our applicant? In person, great.
Madam Chair, can you hear me? Is the mic working?
Yes, thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. I'm the agent for the property owner. My name is Addison Milne Price. I'm a registered professional planner employed at Design Plan Services located at eighty-seven Skyway Avenue, Toronto.
Great, thank you. Do you have any changes to make to the application today?
Yes, Madam Chair. I would like to update variance eight as per the recommendations in the planning staff report. So, that will be changing variance eight from the originally proposed thirty-six point eighty-four percent, fifty-eight point sixteen meter squared, to forty-five point two-four percent. And that comes to seventy-one point four-two meter squared.
All right, thank you. Any other changes?
No, Madam Chair, that is it.
Okay. All right, sorry, I just have to look back in my agenda. So, we do have people, anyone in the audience on this item? No, but I believe we have some neighbors online. So, if you could provide us with a brief presentation?
Absolutely. And, well, while there are no further changes to the variances, there were some other changes that we did in response to planning staff and then urban forestry staff, but it was also, I think, addresses some of the concerns of the neighbors. So, that includes, obviously, the rear landscaping has increased. But we're also decreasing the size of the pool. And through doing that, we're aiming to retain tree number six in the rear. We're also going to be retaining the retaining wall at the rear in between the rear property. So, that will be the same. Now, just to get on to the variances, the first three variances, they all pertain to the rear deck on the plan, referred to as a covered patio just in the backyard there. The first variance pertains specifically to the east side yard setback of that rear deck. And I just want to point out that it's flush to that dwelling, to the proposed dwelling. We're essentially matching the setback of what we're proposing. But we're also matching the setback of the existing dwelling, which is zero point nine-three meters. You can see that on the survey as well. I'll speak to the setbacks a bit more as I get to the end of my presentation. But just in regards to variance two, this pertains to the height of the deck above ground. The variance itself is a little bit complex to read through. It's a bit wordy. But it essentially pertains to the height from the sort of floor of the deck to the very bottom of the ground where it touches. And because this is a property with such a steep slope from the front of the property to the rear, you can see that slope on the elevation drawings. Even though this deck is accessed from the ground floor, it ends up being quite a bit high above the ground. But it's not from an effort to transfer it into a balcony or to raise the surface of the deck as it projects out from the yard. It's really just a result of the unique topography of this property. And I'll also point out that if we are indeed retaining that mature tree in the back, that along with the other trees would serve to mitigate any sort of privacy impacts of this deck, even though it is located farther above the ground than is normally permitted. So, lastly pertaining to the deck, variance three pertains to how far this deck projects from the rear main wall into that rear yard setback. I want to point out that the zoning bylaw does permit you to project into the rear yard setback for decks and other platforms, one point five meters, in fact. We're only proposing a projection of zero point four-three meters into that rear yard setback. However, because we also require a side yard setback, again, remember, we're just matching that existing side yard setback, we get hit for this variance as well. To just quickly run through the other remaining variances, I see my time is ticking down. Variance four pertains to the driveway width. Now, the maximum driveway width is regulated in the zoning bylaw in a couple of different ways. First of all, there's a six-meter sort of parent bylaw that requires all front yard driveways to be six meters. And then it also is further reduced to match the width of the garage. In this case, we're proposing a one-car garage, and so the two-car width driveway requires permission. But I'll just point out that this driveway is below that six meters. So, we could have a two-car garage, and this would be a compliant as of right driveway. It's also compliant with the soft yard landscaping in the front. So, it's a contemplated driveway for this size. Just moving on to the next variance, variance number five, this pertains to the floor space index. I just want to point it in terms of the building envelope we're proposing. The building length is fifteen point nine-five meters, which is, you know, below the seventeen-meter maximum building length. It's also quite a bit below the maximum building height. The maximum building height in this lot is twelve meters. We're proposing ten point nine-one meters, which I think, taken together, means that this house fits quite nicely into the general building envelope contemplated by the zoning bylaw. It's also quite similar to some of the other new builds. In fact, just down the road, six four eight Briar Hill was approved with an identical FSI. To discuss the last two variances really quickly, as I expressed earlier, we're matching those existing side yard setbacks, but we're also matching the adjacent setbacks, particularly on the eastern side on six six four Briar Hill Ave. That has a side yard setback of also zero point nine meters. So, there's going to be a great symmetry there, which matches, again, with what's existing here. Lastly, to just touch on the soft yard landscaping, there are other examples of similar rear yard soft landscaping in this neighborhood. Six two three Briar Hill Ave. has a percentage of forty-five point thirteen percent. So, this isn't the smallest amount of rear yard soft landscaping. But I'll also point out that retaining walls don't count as soft landscaping, and we're keeping that retaining wall, and that was a request of the neighbor. So, that, I think, covers my presentation. Apologies for going over time, but there was a little bit I wanted to get in there.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions of the applicant? Mr. Allison?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to make sure, so the amendment to the variance for the rear yard soft landscaping, we have an updated site plan to reflect those changes?
Through you, Madam Chair, yes, there is an updated site plan, the revised site plan does indicate the updated soft landscaping.
Okay. And that's just so I understand, that's the partial, that's the rear yard landscaping calculation plan dated, looks like June first. Do we have a revised one? It might be attached to the staff report.
So, I think-
Oh, we do. It's in the late package. There we go. I just want to make sure I'm looking at the most recent plan there. Okay. Okay. No further questions?
Mr. Niffel. Mr. Niffeld, do you have questions?
Thank you, very brief one. Thank you, Madam Chairman. You mentioned that the tree that you're going to preserve, which is in the rear yard, is going to provide privacy for the elevated rear deck. Did you discuss that elevated rear deck with the next door neighbor to the east?
Through you, Madam Chair, no, unfortunately, no discussions have been made in terms of discussions with the neighbors. So that is unfortunate. But what I will point out is that, as far as I'm aware, in terms of the neighbors that have raised concerns, it's actually not the adjacent neighbors to the side. It's the rear neighbors that do have some concerns.
Okay, the only comment I would make is that if you're concerned with privacy, and I think you should be, the deck is quite exposed to the neighbor to the east. It overlooks their property. I appreciate that you've got like a kitchen counter along that edge. But there's still a privacy issue there. You might want to look at, in consultation with the neighbor next door, you might want to look at some privacy screening in that area. I'm loath to put that in as a condition in this case, but it might be worth following up.
Through you, Madam Chair, member Niffeld, thank you for that suggestion. I've actually confirmed with the architect that if we do need to put privacy screens in, they will work structurally. So that's absolutely an option.
Okay, thank you.
Yes?
Sorry, may we confirm? I think I looked at the side elevation. It looks like the screening is there. It looks like the side main wall comes over and covers that kitchen on the side. On one side, but not the other. But is it the side, then, where the deck is directly adjacent with the side main wall that has that screening? Because on the other side, you've got the basement walkout, so there's a bit more of a setback?
That's the section where the deck is visible.
Yeah.
Really east elevation, but it says, it's drawing A2 dot three.
Oh, I see, yeah.
You see it, and...
But I think that side, if I'm not mistaken, that has the basement stair on it. There's a bit more of a side yard setback on that side than the other? They've got the screening, that's where the, that's the side that's setback a little further, if I understand it correctly?
It's opposite to the basement walkout, right? It's the covered patio, which is on the east side.
That's right.
Right, that you're referring to. While my colleagues are pondering that, I'll ask another question. Regarding the side yard setbacks, you said those are the setbacks of the existing house? So on the, I think it's the east side, the existing house has a one-story garage, correct? So the setbacks to the garage at this point. So when you say it's the same setback, it's to a one-story element as opposed to the proposal is to widen the house so that it's closer to the property line? Does that make sense?
Yes, Madam Chair, you're correct. That garage is on the east side, and that is what the setback is measured to. I don't believe it's considered a detached garage, so that garage is just part of the main structure of the building.
Right, but it's a one-story element. I think that was my point. So on the west side, though, it's point nine-three, the existing house is point nine-three?
Yes, Madam Chair. In fact, on the site plan, it's a little tricky to see, but there is an outline of the existing dwelling.
Okay. All right, thank you. Sorry, Mr. Niffeld and Mr. Allison, did you have any follow-up?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. All right, let's hear from the residents.
Hello, Madam Chair?
Yes, hello. Name an address, please?
My name is Gilbert Alul.
Okay.
Gilbert Alul and 287 Hillhurst Boulevard, Toronto.
Thank you. And go ahead, give us your comments.
Thank you for your time. Three basic concerns. One, obviously, is privacy. I do not have a mathematical, I don't have a factual base on the mathematical side. But currently, I did provide some photos, trusting you received them, from pictures from the backyard. With regard to privacy, currently, there would be about a thirty-five, thirty, thirty-five degree angle in terms of the house, 666 Briar Hill, the rear of the house, being, you know, essentially towering above, I don't mean towering, but overlooking, you know, our home in the backyard, et cetera. With the new plans, it would look to be, as the backyard is further occupied, it would look to be that the angle of view, which is what I'm referring to, would be roughly between sixty and sixty-five degrees. Now, I do not state that as accurate. It's strictly, you know, my consideration. And I'm happy to find somebody, if necessary, to provide correct degrees, et cetera. But we have concerns about privacy with respect to the fact that, given the protrusion of the house, we would definitely lose much further privacy because it would be a direct overlook into the backyard. I did provide some photos with regard to the current fence, the size of the fence, the fence from the top of the fence to the current retaining wall, the top of the fence, to the soil in the backyard, and also to the bottom of the deck of our backyard. So we do obviously have some privacy issues with regard to the angles changing significantly with regard to the new build. The other concerns include the trees. I understand one of the trees is going to be maintained, given that there's a change in the, I assume, what I heard was the size of the pool. At this juncture, the trees, both the ones that are going to be removed and impacted, will serve to essentially denude the, you know, the tree line and the natural elements that exist in the backyard, further creating the privacy issues. But also, you know, we have concerns about the trees themselves. So that is an area of concern. And of course, the soft landscaping issue. Over the years, we've had significant water and soil runoff from the 666 backyard, so much so that three years ago, we had to replace the deck. We did not change anything in the design of the backyard or anything else. We did not add anything. We did not remove anything. We just had to replace the deck and create better water runoff and water management and soil capture so that we could deal with the excess runoff. That project cost between, I think it was about thirty-five thousand dollars to do. So with the amount of runoff that we've had to deal with, we're concerned about the soft landscaping with additional water and with additional potential soil. So these are areas of concern. We're somewhat concerned with respect to the backyard in terms of a much larger fence going up. It would essentially cage us in and remove any, what's the word? It would remove the view of any natural, you know, tree lines, you know, the sky, et cetera. It would limit, I think, our ability to enjoy the backyard, the deck area as we do today. Those are our concerns.
All right, thank you. Regarding your concern about the overlook and the privacy, are you making reference to the variance for the deck, the height of the deck?
Yes.
Okay, all right. You just didn't make it clear in your comments, so I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Apology.
No problem, no problem. Does anyone else have any questions of this resident? No? All right, thank you very much. Next neighbor, please?
Through you, Madam Chair, Doron Tellem is unmuted.
Okay. Hello?
Oh, there I am. It was, it remained unmuted. So I'm on 663 Briar Hill. I did not file any objection. I have just been listening keenly to the call. I would, with Madam Chair's permission, just ask a question on the height of the, and I'm certainly not a professional in this matter. So my question to whoever can answer is the height of the structure itself. Is it going to be much more than what we're used to on the street? I'm right across. I'm on the other side. I'm on the south side of the street.
Okay, and just to clarify, your name? I don't think we called...
It's Doron Tellem. So first name is D-O-R-O-N, last name T-E-L-E-M.
Thank you. All right, we will let the applicant address that once we've heard from all the neighbors. And your concern, your question is regarding the height of the house, correct?
Yes, the height of the house. I would add one other question, which is just how, and this may not be for this committee, and again, apologies for my ignorance on these matters, but the level of disruption that it's going to cause in terms of construction or whether this committee has any power to mandate anything around the times of day and just level of disruption, et cetera.
All right, we will let the applicant address those when he comes back. Thank you very much. All right, and the one more resident?
Hello?
Yes, hi.
Madam Chairman?
Yes?
Hi, this is Aaron Ideween. I'm at 285 Hillhurst, rear yard neighbor. And I share many of the same concerns as my other neighbor, the other rear yard neighbor. So I won't, I'll try not to repeat those, but I'm glad to hear that the trees will be saved and that the soft landscaping area has been increased. I just want to make sure that the area under the proposed platform is not part of the calculated square footage for the area of the soft landscaping. I don't think it's supposed to be, it should be excluded. So I don't know if that seemed to be a bit of a, I don't know if it was an error on the original calculations, but it looked like it was more like thirty-two percent as opposed to thirty-six percent. That's really my concern, is the amount of soft landscaping. Because I too am concerned with runoff from the property. One question I do have is that the backyard, I presume, is going to be leveled. So, you know, it's going to act as a terrace. Is it, is the grade at the rear property line, is it rising? Or is it being dropped at the back of the house? In other words, will the retaining wall behind my property, between the two properties, be raised and therefore the privacy fence also be raised? I couldn't tell from the elevations on the drawings. And then my other comment is that I know that a height, roof height variance isn't being requested because the roof height is, you know, allowable. But keep in mind, because of the topography of the hillside, the back drops away, and then my property drops away even further, that from the back of the house, it reads as a fourth-story home or a four-story structure because it looks like a basement walkout. So although the roof height is not, doesn't require a variance from the back, it in effect is a very tall structure. And the closer it gets to the property line, you know, the more, the more it sort of dominates the rear, you know, visual scape of the property. So those are my concerns. But my primary concern is really water runoff and privacy issues, which hopefully will be mitigated by retaining the tree in the center of the backyard.
All right, thank you. That concludes the residence, correct? Okay, let's bring the applicant back to address the various concerns of the residents, please.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you to the residents that made those comments. Firstly, just to address the concern about the variance, this proposal went through a zoning review. And so I'm confident, just on that basis, that we do have the correct variances. What I will point out, I did do a quick dive into the zoning bylaw after that one rear neighbor indicated that there might be an error. And I'd like to confirm that it's not as if, when there is a platform over soft landscaping, that it counts as hard landscaping. Rather, that entire area is just not considered as part of the rear yard. So in this case, it actually would not adjust that percentage at all. In terms of the concerns from the overall height of the building, you can see, I think, from the elevation in front of you here, that this is absolutely a standard type of dwelling that you would see for new builds along Briar Hill Ave and within North York generally. The twelve-meter height limit is definitely quite generous. As I mentioned in my original proposal, we're over a meter below that. So that's almost one whole additional story that we could really increase that. That three feet can add up to quite a bit. So in terms of height, absolutely, it will be similar to what you can expect along the road. And it could be higher as of rights. In terms of how that impacts the rear neighbors, what I would just point out is that you have to have some sort of contemplation when you're purchasing a property that's at the bottom of a hill, that people above the hill can look at you. Even in the photos that were provided by the neighbor today, you can see that the rear windows of the existing dwelling already have a clear view into the neighbor's backyard. And that's a simple fact of living in an urban area. You may see your neighbors on occasion. You may be able to look into their backyard from your second-story window. That's a simple fact of life. And it's something that the topography here does exacerbate. But they're not in a way that I think is really impacted by any of the variances that we're proposing. Just in terms of the water runoff issues, obviously, that is not something that's under the purview of the committee. But what I can say to the neighbors is that through a building permit application, and this dwelling will need to go through a full building permit application, things like stormwater runoff will be reviewed. And so that is a chance for us to not only ensure that there's no worse impacts than what's existing now. If there are runoff issues, that's something that would be addressed through that process. That is something that's looked at through the building permit process. In terms of the, there was one question from the neighbor about the side retaining wall. I'm afraid I can't answer that question. We don't have the level of drawings completed yet to really have all of the grading figured. Again, that's something that is done at the detailed design stage. But again, I'd point out, that's not one of the variances that we're pursuing today and asking for your approval. I believe that covers all of the concerns, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Can you just clarify which, I'm looking at the tree protection plan, and I heard one of the neighbors say something about the tree being retained in the rear yard. But the large tree that's not really in the middle, but middle east, I'm not sure. Is it number six? Yes, number six. But on this plan, it says it's to be removed. So can you just clarify, is that being removed?
So yeah, our intent is to maintain that tree, tree number six. Your colleague is correct, that is the correct number. We haven't updated our arborist report, so it's based on the last site plan.
Okay, just wanted to clarify because they mentioned it. So, Mr. Allison?
Maybe the applicant can clarify why it's not shown on the updated site plan for rear yard landscaping area? And my only concern is that whole area around the tree is hardscape patio. So how does this fit in, how does the tree fit into your plan at the rear? You have a swimming pool right next to it, too.
Through you, Madam Chair. So there is a... Uh, through you, Madam Chair. So the, there is a small degree of overlap from the swimming pool into the, the TPC. Um, our, our, our intent is to work with, uh, Urban Forestry to try, try and retain that tree. Um, that's, that's our, our goal of the application. Um, originally we're going to remove it. You're, you're absolutely correct, uh, sir. There is uh, hardscaping that's, that's shown, uh, around the tree. Um, it's, it's possible Urban Forestry, they won't accept that. And in, in which case it's likely, we might not even end up needing this, this eighth variance. Um, but it is, uh, as, uh, designed right now. So we'd like to, to try and get that forty-five percent.
And, sorry. And is there an intent to put a fence along the rear property line? And if so, what is the height of that fence? Because that was also mentioned.
Uh, Madam Chair, I can't speak to, to any fences. Um, I haven't been told about any plans. Uh, my, my guess is that, uh, if there is a fence, it would be comply with the, the fence by law.
All right. Uh, one other thing, one of the residents asked a question about the amount of disruption to the neighborhood. And maybe you could just comment for their benefit on how that's regulated in terms of hours of construction, that kind of thing.
Oh, uh, for sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, so of, of course, that isn't something that, that we're considering today. Impacts, uh, from construction, of course, could be felt through an as-of-right building. Um, but through the, the building permit process, a, a construction management plan is, is typically something, uh, that is required. And all of the, the contractors and, and construction workers will have to be appropriately, um, certified to, to work through this. Uh, there will likely also need to be erosion and sediment control, uh, measures put in place during construction to ensure that there's no dust or, or other sort of, uh, impact on the, the adjacent or nearby dwellings.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Knipfel.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. You mentioned that, um, variance number eight had been changed to forty-five point two-four percent of rear landscaping. Can you show me where it is, uh, on the site plan? Uh, I, I don't see very much landscaping and it may just be that it's not labeled, but.
Yes, uh, through, through you, Madam Chair. Um, I, I'd point out, definitely make sure you're looking at the, the revised, uh, site plan. But also I want to point out that, uh, the pool is considered soft landscaping. So the majority of the soft landscaping on the, on the property is from the pool.
For now, that, that, that's changed.
Staff, can you put up the revised site plan, please? Was in the late package, I believe.
Yeah, I'm just looking for it now.
Just so we can all see it.
Oh, okay. That's better. So is the intent, the, the area around the tree, is the intent that that is soft landscaping or hard landscaping?
Uh, so right now, through, through you, Madam Chair, the, uh, the, the plan does indicate that as hard landscaping. Um, it's, it's likely that this will, will need to be changed to, uh, retain the tree. Um, Urban Forestry gave us their, their comments, uh, just, I think it was on Friday last week. Uh, so we haven't had time to, to appropriately cite that tree, uh, but it, it is our intent to maintain it. Um, you, your colleague was correct in pointing out that where tree number six is right now. Um, if you look at, on the site plan, there is hardscaping there. However, the, the intent is, is to keep that tree. Uh, you're absolutely correct in pointing that out. It's possible that that hardscaping may need to be changed.
And, okay. Thank you.
Are we done with questions of the applicant? All right. Thank you. We'll take this into committee. Go ahead, Mr. Allison.
Sure. I'll get us started off. Uh, two things. Um, okay. Generally, uh, off the bat, I think it's a very good application. Uh, they've, I'm, I'm glad to see the, uh, agent has worked, uh, through, uh, a lot of these, um, planning matters, uh, with planning. Um, two things that kind of flagged, uh, one, uh, Mr. Knipfel brought up was the rear platform. Um, I'm, I, I, I'm confident, I, I, I'm satisfied with the privacy and overlook on the rear platform. Um, the, the platform, at least the way that I interpret the drawings is you, you've got the platform up against the side main wall on one side and the wall just carries right over. So you, you just don't even see the deck at all. It does create some additional massing. But from a privacy standpoint, I, I think it's okay. And then on the other side, there's quite a bit of setback from the property because the deck only comes just past the midpoint of the yard. And then there's a pretty big basement walkout. So there's a bit of setback there. I, I, I think I'm generally okay with that. Um, and also I think the condition that was put in the community planning report to tie substantially in accordance with the site plan, uh, that satisfies the concern that that, uh, deck will not get any bigger. Um, the other concern that I had was with the soft landscaping at the rear. Um, this was brought up, you know, via, you know, drainage with other neighbors. Uh, this property is higher than a lot of its neighbors. So I think water mitigation is something that should be considered. Um, I, I don't think the application is developed far along enough to warrant a soft yard landscaping variance at the rear. I don't, like I look at the updated plan, I see a massive tree in the middle of the yard. That should be your starting point for your design, right? Official plan, uh, requires that, uh, you know, planning, uh, you have to start with what's there with the existing context. You can't design the whole house and then just say, oh, we're going to work around the tree later. It's not a small tree. It's a major tree. Um, and I, um, if we're going to have to remove some hardscaping, then the, the, I don't see where the variance would be, uh, sort of required. Um, lastly, and I'll end with this, I mean, these are nice, big lots on Briar Hill. They're, they're big lots. We're starting with a, we've, we've basically got carte blanche, new house. I just don't see why we can't get a fifty percent rear yard landscaping. Also, we're building a bigger house into the rear yard. So the, the fraction of the pie of that rear yard that you have to begin with is being reduced. So you're really only dealing with fifty percent of what's left. Um, I look at that, it's really, there's really nothing left. They're kind of just little spit, spits of kind of landscaping around the perimeter. So, uh, while I'm supportive of the application, I, I, uh, I, I wouldn't be supportive of that, that last variance for that, uh, rear yard landscaping. But like I said, um, the applicant stated himself that there's some work to be done, uh, with forestry, with the tree. Um, I, I don't think it's, I, I think they got to give us a little bit more, uh, in terms of that soft landscaping at the rear. Also, it might help to address some of the privacy concerns of being higher up from the neighbor. You don't clear cut the backyard.
Yeah.
The impact of that massive wall with all those windows. And I do take the applicant's submission that it's a rear condition versus a rear conditions. There's only so much you can do, but this is where mature trees and mature landscaping in a mature neighborhood like this, you know, uh, can help to mitigate some of those impacts. So I think that's for me, at least where the application falls, uh, short.
And I would agree with you that you've got a large, you've got a large lot to start with. If you're going to build that big a house, you can compromise the, like the swimming pool doesn't need to be that size. The swimming pool could be reduced, increase the amount of soft landscaping in the backyard and you're, you know, you're having less of an impact on, at least if you maintain the tree. It's going to, it's going to be easier to maintain the tree if you have more soft landscaping. Right?
Well, yeah, that's a less injury to the tree as well. Yeah. So and, and forestry did submit a separate report. They did note it wasn't related to the variances. I disagree in the, the soft yard landscaping one. I think that's directly related. Um, so I, yeah, I, 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 I think that's a fair sort of, also taking into account the concerns of the neighbors, I think that tree is sort of the biggest, um, thing that will help to mitigate the impact, uh, to them. Terms of drainage, in terms of privacy, in terms of all the things we discussed.
Yeah, I think the stormwater drainage issues will be addressed through building permit. And, you know, they'll have to make, put in whatever provisions they need to keep the water from draining off this property onto other properties. But the tree goes a long way to, um, mitigating the impact of a very large house, which I think it is. Um, so I would agree with you on that. I also think the covered patio should have a condition that it remain unenclosed.
On the side as well, where it's shown is closed right now?
No, just the.
Oh, just the other two sides. Yeah, that's, that's fine. Yeah.
Mr. Knipfel.
I agree with what's been said about the rear yard. Um, I'm, I'm not, I'm not in favor of the reduced landscape provision in the backyard. Um, but I'm also, I'm not as confident as my colleague about the covered patio. It seems to me that the covered patio and the way it's being presented here is just exacerbating a really bad problem. Um, the overview problem, uh, raise the space up outside, put it way up in the air and then, um, ask the people around you to not notice that it's there. I'm sorry, that's just not acceptable. If the existing tree can be retained, that helps with one side, but the other side, the east side of the covered patio faces the rear yard of an adjacent neighbor. There is nothing there blocking it. It has, um, it has walls on two sides, but it is open on two sides. And it's, uh, relative to the two sides where overlooks a problem to the back and to the side. So I'm personally not in favor of either variance eight or variance number two, and I won't be supporting them.
All right.
It's, it's hard to assess number two because the numbers for the variances are not actually on the drawings. It's hard to understand where the actual projection is. It's not.
Yep.
It's.
See giving a variance to a, to have an elevated patio when it has these kinds of implications. So I, I'd be happy to have this rethought and come back, but I'm, as it is, I, I can't support variance number two and, and variance number eight. I still think for all the reasons that the other two members have mentioned, I agree with them. It's just not enough. And the, my, the, my understanding is that in the very near future, swimming pools won't be included as soft landscaping, in which case the numbers here would be really interesting to see.
They're not great.
All right. Um, regarding variance number two, do you have any other insight, Mr.?
If I, I, I want to make sure I understand it correctly. I'm looking at the site plan. I see the projection that's requested is three point six one meters with a height of three point zero five. So we're just over by point, well, about a me, a meter, uh, one point one one meters, uh, uh, on the projection. If I look at the site plan, the way I understand it is that, that it's probably taken from the rear main wall that's inset. Right? So the, normally like i- i- if that deck was an inset there and it was coming off the back, I mean, they would have that, that uh, within the two point five to get down, right? To make it work. Um, but because I think they have the inset there, it's counted as, uh, the overall projection is counted. The, if they weren't to get the variance, you know, you'd, you'd have the stairs essentially just go straight down along the back. It wouldn't be able to turn that corner. You'd be capped at two point five. Yeah, I just questioned how they get access from that ground level down to the outside without having to go through. I mean, there's certainly a desire to have some connection from the ground. I think if there's a concern with, uh, Mr. Knipfel, I think if, like, if I had any concern with that, I, I, it would be with the massing uh, that it generates from the extension of the side main wall, uh, a little further back. But in terms of pr- like privacy and overlook, I think I'm okay. Yeah. Um, but to your point, uh, I, you know, the lot is higher up than the adjacent property. So the impact of, uh, oversight to the pro, the neighbor at the rear is, uh, more extreme than it, it might be in a typical circumstance.
Um, and we don't have that neighbor here, correct?
No. Ms. Castan, I, uh, Madam Chairman, I don't know how you feel about the, um, the, uh, projection of the terrace. Uh, just seeing, I think if I'm not mistaken, we're down to three members.
Yep. We are. I think about that, uh, covered patio and I sort of think, well, that could be building area, right? And if it was a two-story building element, if you extended the, um, rear wall to the extent of the rest of the rear wall, then you'd have a big mass of a building, whereas this is at least a one story. It's a smaller impact, which I'm somewhat supportive of. Um, I do realize it's high. Well.
I mean, I can certainly see, you know, looking at the rear elevation, Mr. Knipfel's point, if, if you do have, um, if the rear, that platform was limited, uh, sorry, limited to the bump out area on the side and you had it come down directly with a staircase, you wouldn't have that platform, at least at the center portion of the rear main wall that might mitigate some of the privacy concerns with the neighbor, uh, at the direct, immediate, at the, at the rear property line. There's not, you know, I, I, I think there's some consideration should be given to Mr. Knipfel's comment because they're not, the, the depth is, you know, you're, you're kind of pushing on the depth. Like the rear lot line is not far away on both these properties. If they were deep lots, I don't think we'd be having this discussion. But the, I guess with, with the elevation change, uh, between the two properties and the limited, uh, rear yard setbacks, um, I, I can see how that may exacerbate the step, setback. I, I'm willing to support, uh, Mr. Knipfel, uh, y- you know, if, if you were to have a motion, um, I, I, I think that could, that could be resolved, uh, with, with, uh, less of an impact to the neighbor, but.
So, sorry, are you suggesting not supporting variance two?
Uh, if, yeah, if Mr. Knipfel has a motion, I'd be willing to second it without the, with, with the refusal of variance number two. Not to say they couldn't put a deck, but they just, they would be limited. They'd have to have a platform and they'd have to drop, come right down and have something at grade.
I understand. All right. Does Mr. Knipfel like to make a motion?
Uh, yeah, um, I'd like to move approval of the application with the exception of variance two and variance eight, which I would recommend be refused. The other variances, I'd recommend that be approved. And, uh, there's a forestry condition number two attached and I, oh, and that's with, no, that's okay. That's fine.
Sorry?
The community planning report, uh, there's a recommendation, uh, variance two, well, we refuse variance number two. It was tied substantially in accordance with. Yeah.
Was it just variance two? Sorry, I don't have the report in front of me.
Yeah, I'm just making sure. Uh, yeah, it was related to the two variances we refused, two and eight.
It is substantially in accordance with the site plan.
So we don't really need to.
We don't need it because variance two.
Those were the two variances at planning kind of.
As amended.
Yep.
All right. We have a motion on the floor.
Hey, I will, I'll second.
Thank you. Yes. Bless forestry. All right. All in favor of the motion? That is unanimous. The application as amended and save and accept variances two and eight have been approved. Thank you. All right. Took us a little off, off our course for a minute. Um, let's go on to item twenty, twenty, two oh one Wedgwood Drive. This is an app. Oh, oh, right. We couldn't reach the deferral. Sorry, I'm sorry. Lost track. Um, yeah. That was item twenty-six? Did we find the individual?
Yes?
Hello?
Hello. Uh, good afternoon, chair and members of committee. My name is Basma Muhammad Ali from CM Designers and Engineers. And, uh, I'm here today representing the owner of seventy-five Winston Park. At this time, we are respectively requesting a deferral of our application to a future hearing date. The reason for this request is to allow additional time to address comments received from committee planning and to ensure that any revisions may fully respond to staff and community feedback. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, any questions of the applicant?
No.
All right. Uh, would someone like to make a motion? Mr. Knipfel.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'd move that the application be deferred to allow the applicant to consult further with community planning.
All right. Thank you very much.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Allison. All in favor of the deferral? That is unanimous. The application or the deferral's been granted. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now we can go back to item twenty. This is an application, 201 Wedgwood Drive, for a new dwelling with a rear deck and a garden suite in the rear yard. Variances are for east side yard setback to the deck, east side yard setback to the front canopy, east side yard setback to the rear canopy, building length, building depth, east side stairs encroachment into east side lot line, height of side exterior main walls, east side yard setback, west side yard setback, floor area of a garden suite, canopy projection into the separation between the garden suite and the main dwelling, eaves encroachment into the building setbacks. On file, we have a previous decision from nineteen eighty-five, survey plans, revisions, revised plans, arborist report, tree protection plan, a community planning report, and two letters of support from one ninety-nine and two oh-three Wedgwood Drive. Do we have our applicant with us online, I believe?
Yes, Joe Dome, one thirty-three Torresdale Avenue, agent for the owner.
Thank you very much. And do you have any changes to make to the application today?
Um, yes, I'll, first note, we have had discussions with planning staff, um, and the proposal has been revised according to the recommendations. Therefore, we are requesting to remove, um, variance number six as, uh, shown on screen. And, uh, for variance number ten, the garden suite, uh, has been reduced to ninety-five square meters, um, as reflected in the revised drawings. And, um, uh, planning staff has no concerns with the proposal as amended.
All right. Thank you. Do we want a presentation or do we have any questions for the applicant? No? All right. Uh, unless there's something you wanted to point out, we will take it into committee for a decision.
Um, well, I, I do have a, a lengthy, uh, presentation though, um, but if committee is satisfied to proceed, then that's, uh, that's acceptable.
We don't have anyone on this item in terms of, uh, surrounding residents, so, um, I'm not sure the committee needs a presentation. They're, they're nodding negatively, so...
Okay.
All right. But if there's anything you want to point out specifically, you're welcome to.
Um, I, I can point out regarding the, the side yard setback, um, that the lot line is angled. Um, it does refer to a, a pinch point, um, and it does widen further. Um, the second story above the garage is actually stepped back a little bit to reduce, um, um, the, uh, the massing impact. Uh, garden suite, um, uh, the, the garden suite is actually occupies less than, uh, uh, the ten percent of the, uh, the lot area. Um, and we do feel it is a good fit due to the, the length of the lot.
All right. Thank you. So we can take this into committee? Go ahead. Anyone? Mr. Allison, you're...
Sure, I'll bring a motion. Um, yeah, I mean, I will blame the applicant for, uh, not wanting a presentation because it's a good application. So, um, I, this is a great lot, uh, that, uh, a great property or, uh, that kind of exhibits where a one-story garden suite, uh, works really nicely, a really good use of, uh, pitched roof, angular planes. Uh, there is a little bit of, uh, added depth, but certainly, uh, mitigated, uh, again, as I noted through, um, through some angular planes at the, uh, roof. And then also in terms of the immediate context, I think it sits really nicely, um, in relation to the neighbors on either side. Nice step back at the rear, nice, uh, step back at the front. Um, if there's no comments, I'd be happy to bring a motion, uh, for approval of the application. I just noting, uh, sorry, as, um, as modified, uh, we bel, did, am I correct to say that the variance six has been, uh, eliminated? Yes, okay. And, uh, as well in the community planning report, modify variance number ten from, uh, one hundred and ten point two-two square meters to eighty-five square meters, uh, and then the recommendations noted in the community planning staff report. Uh, eighty-five. Did I say ninety-five? Oh. We should check with the applicant because the staff report notes eighty-five.
It's eighty-five for the, I noticed this when I was going through it. It's eighty-five for the suite and they added ninety-five because of the porch on the suite. I have to look it up because they're both, both figures are mentioned in the reports.
Okay.
Sorry, where was that revised list of variances that was in front of us with the, I think that came from the applicant with the, uh, X-out area in red?
Um, yes, I, I can confirm that the, um, uh, variance number six is, uh, to be removed.
Oh, yeah.
And, uh, variance number ten. Um, so the staff report actually does, um, have the revised site plan, um, attached, and it, it does refer to, um, the, the interior floor area being, um, eighty-five, uh, square meters, but the, the porch does account for the, the other, uh, ten. So we are requesting, uh, ninety-five, uh, but the eighty-five, um, refers to the interior floor area.
What did we see in the...
The staff report refers to the floor area, which, so, they're both correct, but the variance...
And, and they have attached, uh, to the, uh, staff report, um, the revised site plan as well, with the shows ninety-five.
Can you just scroll down to the site plan so we can see it, the revised one? Do we have it?
There it is there.
It's too small for me to see. Yeah. Sixty, total floor is one ten. So the, the notice, the zoning wording and the notice refers to the floor area. Doesn't refer, refer to gross, I guess, GFA, they're counting the porch, right? Is that the, the canopy?
Um, I believe it does refer to, uh, the coverage. Um, the, the wording is, is a little bit confusing, but, um, it is, uh, taking into account the, the, uh, floor area and the, uh, um, coverage of that porch, um, the covered portion.
So to clarify, if, if the approval was for eighty-five, you're going to have a problem. It needs to be ninety-five to work. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Because it includes the porch.
That's correct.
For floor area? Really?
Sorry?
Is it, the, we're counting FSI, uh, sorry, the FSI is being applied to a porch on the exterior? That's the first I've ever heard of that.
I don't know that we've had a lot of garden suites with porches. That's the...
Because the variance says floor area.
I actually have encountered this in the past, um, uh, with a, another application, um, where there is a covered portion attached to it. Um, for this particular bylaw, they do include the, the covered portion as well as part of the, uh, the area, because I believe it, it refers to, um, it, it refers to, uh, the area of the lot covered by an ancillary building containing a garden suite. Um, so, uh, I believe that is, uh, where that comes in.
Could we specify out, uh, two numbers? One, the interior area, and then, I guess, the area including the porch?
Subject to.
Okay.
How about that?
Yep, I, yeah. So no further concerns?
Okay. Take it into committee? All right. Does someone want to make a motion?
Didn't Jordan start a motion?
Sure, uh, I'll, yeah, I'll make a motion to approve subject application, uh, with elimination of variance number six pertaining to the side exterior stairs. Uh, and, mm, we're modifying variance, uh, number ten pertaining to the floor area for the garden suite from one hundred and ten point two-two square meters to eighty-five, uh, square meters, uh, interior, and we, we said ninety-five, uh, overall.
Or do we say eighty-five and ten for the porch? I don't know. Doesn't matter.
I think either's...
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah. No. Um, how did you word it, Jordan? Eighty-five?
Eighty-five, uh, square meters, uh, interior.
And ten meters.
Uh, and ten meters allocated to exterior porch. If it's not needed, then they can just disregard the last ten.
I think that covers it.
It's an as of right. But he has to, the, it's included in the condition so that it can build the porch if they need it.
All right. Mr. Niffel, you're seconding?
I'd like to second it, but, but I'd also like to compliment the applicant. It was, it is a good, uh, a good submission, a good proposal.
Good submission.
But also, the submission material was very good, and I really appreciated that.
I would agree. All right. So we have a motion on the floor. All in favor? That is unanimous. The application as amended, uh, is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Item twenty-one. Fifty-nine Cobden Street. This is an application for a new two-story detached dwelling. We have variances for lot coverage, height of north and south side exterior main walls, number of stories, area of second-story rear deck, and north side yard setback for the front canopy. Excuse me. On file, we have a survey, plans, cover letter, supporting material, a letter of support from sixty-five Cobden, and a letter of objection from fifty-seven Cobden Street. Uh, okay, we have our applicant.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and committee members.
Thank you. Could we start with your name and address, please?
My name is Shera Sivorkian. I'm the agent for the owner, and my address is one oh-six Lake Shore Road East in Saga, Ontario.
All right. Thank you. Do we have anyone in the audience on this item? No. Okay. Thank you. Just want to verify. Um, do we want a presentation or do we have any questions for the applicant?
I was just going to ask about privacy screening off the deck. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so has there been, been any discussion, uh, concerning some privacy screening for that rear platform, particularly to the, uh, the one immediate neighbor? Um, just look at our compass here, on the north side.
So unfortunately, no, we didn't have any conversation with the neighbors. Uh, uh, having said that, uh, we want to include some, uh, privacy screen from the left side of that wall to, to provide privacy to the neighbor and to the owner as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah. All right. It's an interesting design. Okay, let's take it into committee. Mr. Niffel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Um, it is an interesting design. Um, one of the, uh, objectors was actually to the architectural expression of the building, and, uh, it's different than what is on the street, but I don't think it's in any way negative. I think this applicant is exploring some alternatives to enliven the street, and I, I, I welcome that. Um, I don't think that it imposes any difficulties into the area other than the rear yard deck, which does require, require some form of screening. So I would be happy to, um, put forward the motion of approval, subject to providing privacy screening along these, the north side of the rear deck. And I actually would prefer to not add any more words to the condition because the, um, the dedication to, to form here is so, um, consistent, I, the deck itself might very well benefit from that kind of attention. And so, as long as it's a privacy screen, I'd like it to, um, be compatible with the expression of the building.
Are we okay with that stuff? On the north?
On the north side of the rear deck. And I, I'm not suggesting we add height or whether it's, how it's being built, because the building is unique. I don't want the privacy screen to look like an afterthought. I'm hoping it could be incorporated into the form of the building.
Yeah.
Do you want to prescribe a height?
Put a height in? Okay, we, we could add a height of, of, uh, five feet. I know.
Mm-hmm.
I'm perfect, yeah, I'm aware of that. Okay, fair enough. Um, could I suggest five feet, a five-foot-high privacy screen, but with no other description?
In metric?
Yeah, from the floor of the dockers.
One point five meters. All right. Seconder? Mr. Allison? All in favor? That is unanimous. The application has been approved.
Thank you very much. I would just, uh, want to add that, uh, would like to apologize for the letterhead destination type for that we added in our cover letter.
Okay. All right. Item twenty-two, sixty-nine Bayview Ridge. This is an application to construct a new dwelling. The variances are for height of main walls, building length, building depth, depth, and front yard setback. On file, we have a survey, plans, site photos, arborist report, tree protection plan, geotechnical slope stability assessment, urban forestry memo, excuse me, TRCA memo, and a late community planning report. I take it our applicant's in front of us?
Good afternoon. Sorry, yeah, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of committee. Uh, just as you're going through that list, I believe there's also a late RNFP report that was filed.
Oh, yes.
Uh, yeah, okay.
All right. Um, so, so let's start with your name and address.
Thank you. I'm Sean McGaffey, Senior Associate WND Associates, forty-seven Rose Lawn Avenue, Toronto, Ontario, M four R one E five.
Thank you. And, um, any changes to make to the application today?
Yes. So first order of business would be that, uh, in working with city planning, we are looking to reduce the height of the main wall variance from nine point three-eight meters to nine point zero meters. And I submitted a cover letter with a marked-up public notice to that effect, as well as, uh, revised architectural plans.
So that's variance one?
That's variance one, correct.
And sorry, I totally blanked out when you said the number, the revised number.
Uh, so it would be, uh, where it says the proposed height of the main walls is nine point three-eight. We would like that to read nine point zero meters, please.
Nine point zero eight?
Nine point zero.
Nine point zero. Thank you. Sorry. It's getting late in the day. My hearing's going, I think. Um, all right. Um, do we want a presentation? No. I don't think we need a presentation unless there's something you wanted to point out.
Uh, I would, I would just take one minute and, uh, point out that, um, there was a comment made earlier about starting with what's there, and that's been really the principle of this application, working from the back with TRCA. And, uh, my client who's here fell in love with the property because of the landscaping and the trees, and, uh, tremendous care has been undertaken to preserve the mature trees. Um, parts of the driveway itself are going to be raised and decked on helical piles to avoid intrusions into TPZs. I think it's a very well-thought-out proposal and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. No? No questions? Anyone? All right. We'll take it into committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, Mr. Niffel, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. This is a spectacular site. Um, and, um, I would agree with the applicant that they took the site, inspiration from the site, and developed a proposal from that. I, I'm very pleased with this proposal. I think it's excellent. I have no difficulty... I have no difficulties in supporting it. I think it does the site great compliments, by the way in which it addresses things naturally, and it, in the way it, it also relates to the adjacent properties is really very commendable. I'd like to therefore move approval of the application as modified, subject to forestry condition number one and forestry condition number two. That's, the modification was with variance one changed to nine point zero meters. And also, there's a planning department recommendation, which I'd like to include, which is that building length and depth and front yard setback could be developed in accordance with site plan, north and south elevation drawings. The original, or the, the list of applica, of variances reads, is rather extreme, until you see the site, until you see what the numbers actually mean in this particular location. So, once again, my pleasure to recommend this application for approval and to move so.
Madam Chair, just to clarify, one is a forestry tree protection, one is a ravine condition?
Right, so... Mr. Allison, are you willing to second that?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All in favor of the applic, of the motion? That is unanimous, the application as amended has been approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we need a break, anyone? Okay, we'll do a few more. Item twenty-three. For Hirondale Place. Or Hirondale, I'm not sure I'm saying it correctly. To alter the existing two-story dwelling by adding a rear two-story addition and alteration to the roof line. We have variances for rear side, rear yard setback, area of the second-floor balcony, and lot coverage. On file, we have a survey, plans, applicant's photographs, a letter of opposition from one fifteen Brookbanks. All right, our applicant, are you the applicant, sir? Oh. Okay, if you could just wait a minute, and we'll have the applicant address the application first. All right. I believe they're online.
Good afternoon, am I online?
Yes, you are.
Oh, great. Besides, just Madam Chair, through you, besides the items you just listed, there was some drawings that were, some sketches that were submitted later on. I'm not sure if the presenter's able to bring those up.
Let's start with your name and address, please.
Yep. My name is George O'Frasca from Frasca Design and Planning, twenty-seven eighty-one Highway seven, and I'm the applicant representing the owner.
All right. So you submitted revised plans, you're saying?
Some sketches, just to aid in the description of the, of the variances.
Let's just clarify with staff, was that part of the late package, or no? Do we know? No, I don't think we received those. So, do you, do you have changes to make to the variances?
Well, there is one change that we didn't make to the variances through the, what, what address is this? Like, these, this what's on screen right now is not my, not my file.
For Hirondale?
That is correct.
Oh, one second, we'll catch up.
Okay, yes.
All right.
So there's, there's one change to the variances that was discussed with the planning, and that's the variance number two, where we had originally asked for a balcony of an area of thirteen point eight square meters, and it has been reduced to, one second, six point five square meters.
Okay, six point five.
Correct.
All right, thank you. Do we, let's see here, twenty-two, oh, we do have, yes, we have a neighbor here. So if you could give us a brief presentation on the proposal?
Sure. As you originally pointed out, the proposal is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a two-story rear addition, rear addition. The intent of this proposal is to modestly expand the interior living space to a, to better accommodate the needs of the family, while maintaining still the character of the surrounding neighborhood. The application seeks three variances from the zoning by law. The, number one is the rear yard setback. With respect to the rear yard setback, the encroachment is very minimal. It, because of the rear yard building outline, sorry, rear yard property line going down at an angle, it only encroaches partial of the, of the rear yard. If the presenter was able to slide to see the back, there you go, yes. So technically, the, the, most of the backyard is compliant with the setback, with the only exception of a triangular piece there in the middle of the, of the back wall. In practical terms, this difference won't be noticeable from the neighboring properties or the street, and this allows for a more functional interior layout. Variance number two is the rear second-floor platform balcony. As, as discussed earlier, we had originally requested a thirteen point eight square meters balcony, and it was reduced to six point five meters. This reduction was made in consultation with planning staff who are supportive of this revised design. It should be noted that along the rear property line, a substantial number of mature trees provide natural screening and privacy. The third variance that we're asking for is the lot coverage. The increase in lot coverage is minor in nature and reflects a modest rear addition that does not alter the overall height or scale of the house, as viewed from the street. It is worth noting that approximately one point zero percent of the lot coverage is attributed to the front-covered porch, which is an open, which is an open structure and does not contribute to the massing of the building. For these reasons, I respectfully request the committee approve the variances revised. Thank you for your time and consideration, I will be pleased to answer any questions.
I have one question.
Sure.
In reducing the size of that balcony, where did you reduce it, since we don't have the revised sketch? Was it from the, the north side or the south side? I take it you just shrunk it, or you would shrink it?
Yes, Madam Chair, if the presenter's able to go to the second-floor plan, I'll try
There.
Yep, that's the one. So across the top of the page, where you see the word balcony, right now, it's, the dimensions of that balcony is four feet deep by thirty-six, roughly thirty-six wide. So what we ended up doing was, we reduced that thirty-six, from the, looking at the drawing, we brought in the right side to the left. And if you look right under the thirty foot, under the word balcony, there's a jog in the, in the building, and that's where we stopped the balcony. So, pretty much it got reduced by half.
All right, thank you, that's helpful. All right, any other questions for the applicant? Okay, I guess we'll go to the resident, please come forward and start with your name and address, please. Just, I don't think the microphone's on, sorry, there's a button on the bottom?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, Ken, could you please repeat your name and address?
It's Jack Dalgleish from one-one-five Brookbanks Drive, which is immediately behind the application property. Yes, we were pleased to see that there was a reduction in the balcony. I'm the guy that sent in the letter that said, there's a privacy issue. I was pleased to hear on previous applications that privacy is a consideration. The other new development is that my neighbor at one-one-seven Brookbanks Drive, by the name of Costa Papousis, sorry, I forgot, I think he's listening in, I hope I got his last name right, we just tend to call him Costa. He has spoken with the applicant, who has indicated that they are amenable to discussing putting some landscaping changes in at the back, which would, I think, improve our privacy. As the applicant said, there are mature trees along there, but they don't cover the whole length, there are gaps. So I think with those changes, I'm, I would be happy if we could get some note along the following lines in, in the, in the application. And that is, there would be an undertaking by the applicant to consult with the owners of one-one-seven and one-one-five Brookbanks, with the intention of reaching a mutually acceptable landscaping plan to the back of their property. I don't know whether you guys do things like that, but just some commitment that they will consider that. I mean, it seems to be, if had limited contact, but it seems to be, they seem to be amenable to, to doing that.
And that's a good thing, if they are. Unfortunately, the committee can't put conditions like that on, on approval of an application. It, it's between two owners or three owners, I guess, in your case. So that's something that's a private agreement, and we're not able to put it as a condition.
Okay, just from what I've learned, listening to the other applications, I take it there's been nothing submitted with this one with regard to landscaping, and no intention to remove trees, no intention, or what intention is.
We have comments from forestry on this one? Anyone? No, we don't have forestry comments, so I take it there isn't, there's no indication, they don't have to submit a landscape plan with an application to committee. If there are trees that are in danger of being injured, then forestry would make a comment on that if they're, if they meet their criteria. And they haven't indicated anything in this case, so I, I don't know whether that indicates...
Well, we're, we're hoping the trees are going to stay, it's what we're looking for, is some addition to that.
We can ask the applicant to address that, what their intention is with respect to the trees. He, he will come back and address your comment.
Okay.
Okay.
And just one small thing, if I've read these drawings correctly, I think there's a need to change the compass, I guess is the right word, indications on drawings, A three two one, A three two two, and A three two three, sorry, A three three one, three two, and three three, because I think maybe they've put west, east, and north in the wrong drawings.
I don't know, we can ask the applicant to address that, that happens quite frequently, believe it or not. People get confused with their north-south directions, but he can address that.
Okay, just finally then, to help me understand the process, when this is approved, what further clearances or approvals is required before they can actually build something?
Well, they have to apply for a building permit, and this would be, they have to clear the conditions of the committee for the permit. So if we grant the variances as revised, then the building permit application would have to conform to the decision of the committee and all the other by-law requirements. And then they would be able to, if they're granted a building permit, then they'd be able to start building.
Right. Okay, so perhaps the, the agent then could address my request?
Yep. We will bring him back now.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Frasca?
Yes, Madam Chair, through you, Mr. Dalgleish, I, you're absolutely right, as you pointed out, the compass for those drawings has to be updated, so we'll, we'll be doing that on our next revisions. But just to follow up on your comment about the, about the trees, if we're preserving the trees or not, absolutely, yes, we are, there's no intention to have the trees removed or injured in any way. For your other comments that you made in regards to having additional planting, that's not something that I can promise, but that's something that I can definitely discuss with the, with the owner.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant at this point? Mr. Nipfel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, I'm, I'm pretty sure you won't be able to answer this, but I'll ask it anyway. We, we can't include as a condition of approval an agreement between owners, but we could approve a, a landscape plan that was part of the proposal. I assume, well, perhaps I shouldn't assume, would you be agreeable to deferring this application so that you and the two, the two neighbors that have raised concerns could come up with some kind of a landscape solution to the screening on the rear property line? And could that come back to this committee for approval?
Through you, Madam Chair, the, the backyard in the back has, beside the trees, as pointed out, has a six-foot-high fence, wooden fence. So that, as it is, provides screening, quite a bit of screening. The, the fact to completely screen that backyard, that will consist of either raising the fence or adding quite some mature trees to infill the gap between, between the existing trees. So I, I'm not sure how to answer this, Mr. Nipfel. So I wouldn't be able, in regards to the deferral, I, I would prefer that we don't, if this is the reason why you believe that we should be doing it. I believe based on what we presented and the variances that we're requesting, that they're somewhat, of, somewhat minor. So I, I do understand and feel for Mr. Dalgish, Douglas is, is concerned, and like I said, we are willing to talk to, I'm willing to talk to the neighbor, sorry, to the owner, and then we can, I can put them in contact. As a matter of fact, he said that they already spoke, and as, as he, as he mentioned himself, there are owners that are quite willing to accommodate whatever they can. So I prefer if we go this route, if that's okay with the...
Madam Chair, I just, I don't see a landscaping variance, can I confirm that? So you're tasked with adjudicating the variances before you, not issues between a neighbor and the applicant?
I think it would be very difficult to put some sort of, you know, approve a landscaping plan, it's not some... No. Yeah, I understand, I think it, it would have to be between the neighbors, as we previously indicated. All right, let's take it into committee.
Through you, Madam Chair, Leo Gallo is the general contractor for the owner, he's online, if he can speak also. Leo Gallo is in the list?
But we've already heard from the applicant, do we need to hear from the owner?
It's, it's the general contractor for the owner. It's not, it's the general contractor for the owner. I don't know if, if he's allowed to speak.
I mean... Yeah, I don't think the contractor would be helpful, the owner might be helpful, but not the contractor at this point. I, I don't think we need to hear from him.
Through you, Madam Chair, the owner is here, but he's not ready to speak. He's here, but he's not ready to speak, the owner.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see someone there. No, no, I don't think, I don't think we need to hear from him.
I appreciate hearing from him.
Do we want to hear from the owner? All right, all right, I think, I think we've heard enough, I think we're okay, we don't need to engage any further. All right, we're in committee. Somebody, Mr. Allison?
I can get us started, the only thing, I, I, supportive of the application, I, I would like to see, I just note that there's, there's limited space in the rear yard, and I do understand there is some concern at the adjacency at the rear, we have to be mindful about the... We have to be mindful about the impact, because, you know, in a lot of cases, we have more of a rear yard setback. In this case, you know, it was helpful on the site plan that they outlined what the as of right was, at 7.5 meters. And if you do look at the site plan drawing, the variance pertains only to a very, very small corner at the rear. Otherwise, I'd have issue with a rear yard setback variance on a lot like this, but given that it's just for a very slight corner, I'm supportive of it. But I would like to see, I would like to see that tied to the site plan, because the house does notch where the property line does step back. So I think, I think that's a good approach, but...
Okay.
Yeah, that aside, I, I think it's a supportable application. There's nothing at the rear in terms of soft yard landscaping, nothing from forestry. I think landscaping will benefit. I think that'll be something, you know, as much as I would like us to be able to in committee to, you know, facilitate several agreements, you know, for landscaping plans, I, it's just sort of outside of our, what we're kind of permitted to do. But I, you know, I, when I, when I hear what I hear from the, the agent and the owner, I'm, I'm hopeful that, you know, that they're going to work with the neighbors to come up with a, a solution on that.
All right. Thank you. And just, you didn't make reference to the application as amended, as variance two was amended.
Yes, thank you for that. Yes, I will also note, yeah, the application was, the application, motion is for approval as amended, yes.
All right. Mr. Nipfel?
I'd support that. I wouldn't have supported the original, but I, I support the amended application.
All right. Thank you. All in favor? That is unanimous. The application as amended has been approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair and committee members. Thank you.
All right. Item, does anyone need a break? No? Item 20, sure? No. I'm sure. I'm okay.
Yeah, we're good.
Staff, okay?
Yeah.
All right.
I'm looking at the number of items left.
What's that?
Go ahead. I'm looking at the number left.
All right. Item 24, 3... Nope. Nope. Oh, well, you might get that anyway, you know. Item 24, 373 Woburn Avenue, to alter an existing detached dwelling by constructing a new peaked roof. The variances are for roof eave projections into the east and west side lot lines. On file, we have a survey, plans, and an arborist report. Do we have our applicant?
Good evening, committee. My name is Will Hudson of Hudson Architecture. I'm the architect and agent for the owner.
All right. Thank you. And do you have any changes to make to the application today?
I do not.
All right. Do we need a presentation, anyone? No? My colleagues are indicating no.
It's a hard no.
All right. Any questions for the applicant? Mr. Nipfel?
Just a very quick one. Thank you, Madam Chairman. Going through your drawings, it appears that your eaves troughs, because it was an issue that was raised by somebody on the application, your eaves troughs are all within your property limits, aren't they? They don't extend past the property limits?
Well, that's the proposition, yeah. The existing eaves troughs are actually over the lot line.
Yeah.
So we're, we're improving the current situation.
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Do you want to take this into committee?
Sure.
All right. Mr. Nipfel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'd like to move approval of the application without any conditions. This is an improvement over the existing condition, which I gather has created drainage problems, and there's an opportunity here to correct that, so I think that's a very good thing.
All right. Thank you.
I'll second.
Allison, thank you very much. All in favor? That is unanimous. The application's been approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Item 25, 1307 Bayview Avenue. Yeah. This is to convert a residential dwelling into a childcare facility. The variances are for location of parking spaces, percent of rear yard landscaping, location of children's play area, proximity of children's play area from a lot line abutting a street. On file, we have a survey, plans, cover letter, presentation, transportation services memo, and a community planning report. Our applicant is with us in person? Welcome.
Yes. Through you, Madam Chair, Morgan Dundas with Sajeki Planning, Senior Planner, 227 Pape Avenue. I'll be speaking to the application primarily. I do just want to note that the owner is with me. He's joined me today, and we have our architect online. But again, those are simply just if questions arise.
All right. We do have, do we have somebody in, in attendance? There's supposed to be someone in attendance. Maybe they gave up waiting. I'm not sure. There's one, it shows one online and one in person, but...
Oh, you know what? We actually spoke to a neighbor in the hallway, and we were able to, to sort things out.
Oh. Maybe they were the person.
Yeah, so we've been very collaborative through this whole process, so...
Okay.
We, we actually just spoke about a rear fence being constructed, so...
Okay.
I'll, I'll get in that regard.
Wonderful. But I guess we still need a brief presentation for the other homeowner who's online.
Yeah, happy, happy to provide that.
Go ahead.
So the subject site, and I'll just ask that you pull up the presentation deck that I submitted with the application. I believe it's just titled Supporting Materials. So the subject site is located on the east side of Bayview Avenue, one property south of Sutherland Drive. The site is also located directly east of Mount Pleasant Cemetery. The property is a lot frontage of 15.28 meters, or 50.13 feet, and a lot area of 585.98 meters. Currently located on the subject site, as you just heard, is a, is an existing two-story walk-up apartment building with a rear detached garage. The minor variance application before the committee today contemplates converting the existing walk-up apartment to a childcare facility and demolishing that, that rear detached garage. It should be noted that no built form changes or modifications are proposed to the existing apartment building, so we're not looking to enlarge it, we're not increasing height, anything like that, as you can probably tell from the variances. The proposed, the proposal requires a total of four variances. The first is a rear yard parking variance. The permitted maximum in a rear yard is, is two parking spaces. We're requesting four. The reason for this is one accessible parking space and one drop-off space, just to make it more convenient for, for those parents dropping off their children. The second is a rear yard soft landscaping, so the requirement normally is 50%. I do just want to note that currently in the rear yard, there's no soft landscaping, so we're proposing 12.5. We'd be enhancing that, that existing rear yard condition. Number three is the children's play area, which is, and I quote, like, put in open quotations, "located in the front yard." This is highly technical in nature. If you go to, yeah, if you stop on that, you'll see that there's a, just a small, small percentage of the outdoor play area located in front of the, the main wall, which is V3 or variance number three. So again, highly technical variance. And then variance number four, part of the front property is actually city-owned lands, whereas the, the other portion is, is owned by the owner. So we couldn't actually provide six meters if we wanted to, to the play area. So in this case, it's 3.75. I do want to note, obviously, there will be a, a fence, a safety fence constructed around the play area, around the entire perimeter. I'd also like to note the collaborative process that we followed since even before submitting the application. So we met with community planning and transportation staff ahead of even, again, submitting an application, looking for their thoughts and, and feedback on the, the proposal, of which you can see online. We've got support from both transportation staff and community planning staff, who have, who have reviewed the application in detail. I find that the application meets the general intent and purpose of the official plan. The subject site is designated neighborhoods, and under this designation, daycares are permitted as supportive uses within neighborhoods. The application proposed variances meet the general intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw. The subject site is zoned residential multiple zone, or RM, which permits day nurseries with conditions. I find these conditions to be appropriately met. The application is minor in nature. A total of four variances are proposed that are both, that are both quantitatively and qualitatively minor. And this is an opinion shared by staff, community planning staff and transportation staff in reviewing the application. The proposal is desirable and appropriate development for the site and surrounding area. The proposed childcare facility will service the community itself. I'm here with the owner, and Growing Tykes, the organization is a non-for-profit organization. They're not in it to gouge or price gouge people. So I truly think that this is, this is an optimal use of the site. And then I did also just want to note that I reviewed the letter of objection prepared by, by Mr. Homberg at 1315 Bayview Avenue. I want to thank him for, for providing his comments. You know, comments from residents are always greatly appreciated. As previously noted, we followed a collaborative process with staff. We've, we've really worked with staff on this application from day one to get their thoughts and comments. And I can confirm that the public notice sign was installed on the subject site within a statutory timeframe. I actually installed it myself, so I can confirm that it was on the site 10 calendar days in advance of the hearing. In closing, the application and proposed variances meet the four tests under Section 45 of the Planning Act. The proposal represents good planning and will create a much-needed service to the Leeside-Bennington community.
All right. Thank you. Just one question regarding variance three. Is it, the, the little projection there, I guess, is that actually worth it? Or is that in order to meet a minimum play area?
So, so essentially, it's, when we had first done it, we, we just wanted it to be clear of the front yard setback. So we're clear of the front yard setback. It was just the technicality where it wasn't clear of the, the front main wall. So again, I mean, it's, I think that it, it just adds outdoor play space, even if it's a small amount. It'll be a fenced area. And again, it, it projects, I think it's 0.83 meters past the, the front wall. So I mean, I'm, I'm in your hands on, on that. I see, I see where your, I see where your question's going.
I could just see, you know, trying, path of least resistance would be to remove it, but then you probably have a minimum play area you have to maintain as well.
Yeah, and there's coordination with, with the ministry, so...
Yeah.
We are, we are meeting the target as of right now, so if, if we could, we'd like to keep it, but...
Yeah. No, that's okay. I just, and you said it's going to be fenced, because I have concerns about the vulnerability.
It will. Yeah. Oh, and the, and the one other thing that I'll add, I noticed the condition from community planning staff. They did note that the approval would be, would be based on the plans, and we're totally fine with that.
Okay. Yep. Okay, good. Variance four, I think, I think it should be just generally in accordance with the site plan.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Any other, does anyone have any questions at this point? Mr. Nipfel?
I have a very quick one. There was a, a newspaper, a news story some time ago about some children that were injured in a play area because a car mounted the sidewalk in the play area was in the front yard. Appreciate that's not what you're doing.
Sure.
But given that, I noticed that the front area of this property is elevated above the sidewalk. Will that remain that way?
It...
Could you explain, to the point that the chairman mentioned as well, can you explain the type of fence that, that exists as the face onto the street? In other words, if a car was to unfortunately do that, presumably, there'd be a problem with the elevation, but then there's a fence. Can you describe the fence that's on the end of the play area?
Yeah. Through you, Madam Chair. An excellent question. Again, so the, the retaining wall that exists in the front yard, that will stay, that will remain. We're not altering that in any way. And the fence that would be constructed will be a chain link fence, and if you go back to the site plan, you can, you'll be able to kind of make out where that location would be, or sorry, to the site photographs. I think it's just one, a couple of slides up. Yeah, so if you see this, the photo top left, so that the chain link fence would just be on the right-hand side of that. So the play area would exist between the two buildings on our owner's property.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions at this point? No? All right. Just to clarify, Mr. Troyani is the owner? Okay. There's just unclear whether you were here on behalf of the application or to make comments. All right, fine. I believe we have someone virtually? No, they, they just wrote in, and we don't have their... Mr. Homberg's not? All right. Just to check. It says virtual.
Through you, Madam Chair. From the, one, the attendees are on the waiting list. There's none with the Stephen Homberg name.
Oh, okay. Fine. And you spoke to another neighbor that must have not registered, but was here in person?
Through, through you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I believe that's correct. She was here with her husband, and they lived directly behind. So we actually, we had a great conversation with them, very productive.
Okay. All right. Well, we just put you through that maybe for no reason, but we did have questions, so it's always good practice, right?
Yeah. Thank you.
Sorry? Yes, exactly. You had to stay this long, I mean. All right. So any further questions? Do we take this into committee? All right. We'll take it into committee. Thank you. Okay. Comments? Anyone want to start? Mr. Allison?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm happy to bring a motion to approve the application. I can see that there's been a lot of work done with staff on this, and I'm, I'm also happy to see that the applicant's met with neighbors and assaged some concerns, which makes our job certainly easier. Yeah, and then with respect, yeah, the application was very clear. As the applicant noted, one of the variances is really just to satisfy a, a small bump out at the front. I, I, I think the impact is almost nonexistent. So yes, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve subject application, subject to the conditions noted in the transportation services memo and the conditions noted in the community planning report.
Can we just modify that one in the community planning report? That all the variance B subject develops substantially in accordance with the site plan, not just variance four? Because I'd like to capture variance three in there as well, at least three. And I don't think it has a negative impact on anything.
Sure. Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to. Yeah.
Okay. That the variances be tied to the, yeah. All right. Mr. Nipfel, seconded? Thank you. All in favor? That is unanimous. The application is amended, it's been approved.
Thank you. Have a great night.
You're welcome. All right. 26 was deferred, 27. Anybody need a break?
[laughing]
We'll take a 20-minute... No, I'm not going to torture you any longer. Okay. 446 Ruth Avenue. This is an application for a new two-story dwelling with additional unit in the basement, basement walkout, and east and west side covered porches. We have variances for building length, height of first floor above established grid, width of a vehicle entrance through the front main wall, vehicle access to a parking space, height of side exterior main walls, driveway width, and number of stories. On file, we have a survey, plans, arborist report, tree protection plan, supporting material, a community planning report, and urban forestry memo. All right. Our applicant must be virtual, because there's nobody left in the chambers.
Sorry, if you can let my colleague on as well, because she will be the main presenter. It should be Saloni from London Building Experts.
Okay.
Hi, good evening. This is Saloni from London Building Experts, agent of the owner.
And your address, and could you speak up a bit, please?
Hi, hi, good evening. This is Saloni of London Building Experts, agent of the owner, and my address is 570 Alden Road, Markham, Ontario.
Thank you very much. Do we want a presentation on this, colleagues? Brief? Okay. All right. First of all, do you have any changes to make to the application today?
Yes. So variance number two has been modified from 1.6 meters to 1.5 meters, and variance number eight has been modified, modified from nine meters to eight meters.
Okay. And I thought... Okay, and I thought I saw some more in Community Planning's. Okay. Variance eight? Modified from nine meters to eight meters?
Sorry, um, variance six.
Sorry, six. Oh, I see, yes, that makes more sense because there's no eight. All right, and you're aware of the Community Planning Report recommending refusal of three, six and seven?
Yes, which is why we would like to present our, the, the reasons that we think that this would be, like, it should be supported.
Okay, go ahead.
Can you please bring up the presentation we submitted, sorry? We are so sorry, we submitted a presentation and if it, if it could be brought up.
When did you submit it?
It, it should be November five. It should be titled as supporting material.
Oh. Starts with a photo?
Um, it should be a PDF.
I don't know. When did you submit it?
It should, yesterday, November five.
Yeah, so you missed the deadline for submitting. Do you want to just refer to the plans?
Um, yeah, sure, I can just refer to the plans, sure. So, yeah, I will just go through the presentation, or the, the whole thing. Good evening, everyone. I'm bringing forward the project at four four six Ruth Avenue. The owners are proposing to demolish existing house and build a new two-story house. The subject property is zone residential detached in city of Toronto bylaw. Neighborhood consists of some old two-story, one and two-story dwelling. However, many of the properties in neighborhood have undergone renovation or have indeed developed with new estate dwellings. The property, the subject property has frontage of eighteen point two-nine meters, lot depth of thirty-eight point one meter and a lot area of sixty, six ninety-seven square meters. The proposed house is generally in alignment with adjacent homes with some, um, sorry. So some changes to accommodate families' special requirements that are modest in nature but also demand some minor variances. So the variance number one, if we can go to the site plan, sorry.
So you want the site plan now?
Yes, so if we can go to the site plan. So variance number one is proposing seventeen point two-eight building length, which exceeds maximum permitted seventeen-meter length by only point two-eight meters, which is just for the slightly more proportionate building whilst maintaining all the setbacks and lot coverage. Variance number two, if, as, it's, if we can go to the elevation. I'm so sorry, I had the whole presentation and. Yeah, so the, the originally, so variance number two, we actually modified with, after discussion with planner from bringing it down further to one point five meter, which is more closely aligned with the intent of the zoning bylaw. Variance number three is, and variance number four is, is, sorry, excuse me. Variance number three is for vehicular entrance, which is on forwarding onto Ruth Avenue, the other side elevation. And then the, that is the one of the variances that we are asking, which is seven point three-two meter of vehicular entrance, which is not diverging variance from the characteristic of existing neighborhood. Several lots on this neighborhood has transitioned in recent years towards larger two-story, single detached dwelling with three-car garages. And the proposed three-car is compatible with the overall, overall nature and character of the neighborhood. And variance number four is we would like to keep the existing driveway on Ruth Avenue whereas the zoning bylaw asks, requests the the driveway to be on the other, on the Conaker, which is, we would like to minimize any disruption to the existing infrastructure, which is why we want to bring forward variance number four. The variance number five is proposed main wall height of point two-eight meter, which from, which is, oh, sorry, which is proposed main, main wall height exceeding point two-eight from the permitted of seven point five, which is all mainly due to the architectural design considerations and just for ceiling heights and roof proportions. Variance number six, the driveway width requesting, we, we actually reduced this variance to, from nine meter to eight meter. And then that is the entrance of the driveway being six meter wide. The taper only being, the widest part being eight meters. And this will only add about six square meters of paved area. And we are still well within the sixty, sixty percentage required landscape for variance number six. And then variance number seven, if, as you can see on the elevation, this is only a two-story dwelling unit. It doesn't have any three, third story. And the floor area above garage has only a raised living area. And then design was to confirm to intent of zoning bylaw for maximum height to minimize the potential shadow overlook impact. And it is not negatively impacting any of the surrounding neighborhood. So, yeah, I'm so sorry, I was hoping to have my presentation with this so that I could highlight all the neighborhood, the existing properties with examples, which have similarly characteristic, similar characteristic and similarly designed houses so that, yeah.
That's okay. I think we get the gist of the application. Do you have any questions for the applicant? Maybe you could just explain the, sorry. The height of the first floor above established grade, that's quite a difference.
I had that same question.
Oh, okay.
If there's any examples of that main entrance height that they can give in the area.
Yeah, do you have any examples of that main entrance height, something comparable in the area?
Um, yes. Give me, can I have just one moment, please?
Sure.
So four four nine Ruth Avenue. The existing house, which is similarly designed as the proposal with having the, the, the garage below the main level of the main, main living area level. So, and then there are multiple similar lots with garage, garage below the first floor, the main entrance level.
Sorry, did you give us an address? Did I miss that?
Yeah, four four nine Ruth Avenue.
Do you know what the height is?
And I'm so sorry, I'm not, I'm not sure about the height, but then.
That's okay.
Just.
All right, thanks.
Madam Chairman, I wonder, could, could we get up the, the Google map for Conaker? If you look, there, there's a good photograph of the site and the adjacent properties, and they don't have that elevation made. The, the main entrance is at grade or close to grade on Conaker. And that's the site that this frontage faces.
But the one at four four nine looks fairly similar. Four four nine Ruth.
Okay. I'm looking at where this one would front, so, sorry.
That's okay. It's the garage that faces Ruth, correct? The house that faces Conaker. Yeah, it's a brand-new house at four four nine Ruth Avenue. Any other questions for the applicant? Mr. Allison, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With respect to the drive variance, it, did you, you had some discussion with the transportation in terms of the display? Because I noticed that you've got, you're requesting nine meters, but it actually gets reduced to six at the curb cut? Is that, it's fair to say?
Yes, yes, exactly. So the entrance is only six meter wide. And then the tapered portion at the maximum is about eight meters, which was nine previously, but it was reduced further and not significantly adding any, it's about six square meters increase because of that taper.
Okay, thank you. No further questions, thanks.
Sorry, just one other question regarding the number of stories. Is that because of the lower basement level? Or is that because of the basement level and up? If that makes sense?
So we did have a discussion with planner regarding to this particular question. And then the, the currently, I believe the design of overall is seemingly adjusted technical three-story. It doesn't have any third story at all. Not in, even in the front, like the garage part above and also at the back level, living area. It is, it is a very clear two-story building.
Right, okay. Thank you. Okay, any other questions at this point? Just give us a minute? Anything? Or do we take it into committee? Are you ready to go into committee, Mr. Nipfel, or are you? Okay. No problem. Okay. Yeah, what? You're good? Okay. We'll take it into committee. Thank you for your comments or your presentation. All right, everybody, what do we think?
I'm just trying to get a better grasp of two, two concerns raised by Community Planning for the drive width and the number of stories.
So the driveway width, I mean, the fact that it's six meters at the curb, narrow and splits to eight. I mean, I don't really have a concern with that. It's pretty minor.
Yeah.
Nine would be pushing it, but I think it's okay. I think the, up, the variances overall are fairly minor. Don't love the first floor elevation.
That one I have a, a, an issue with. I think that's an easy, that's an easy one. The, the ground floor heights in this area are, I mean, there's, there's an outlier here or there.
Yeah.
But I think we got to be careful because prevailing form, built form in the area is under one point two meters. They're generally, the, the, the front doors are grounded towards the street. The elevation certainly, I, I know they amended it, they brought it down, but at point one meters doesn't do much. The, the door is essentially at the second story. It's got to be brought right down. I, I was just trying to make sure I, I understand the concern in the Community Planning Report. I generally, you know, it's tough to get a three-car garage approved, but I, I, I think it's supportable in this area. There's a lot of three-car garages. There's a lot of hardscape in the front yard of these large driveways. I was happy to see the display. I would say if we approve variance for the driveway width, I would tie it to the site plan substantially in accordance with, just to ensure that that width is not carried all the way. I wouldn't want to see a nine-meter curb cut.
Yeah.
And then with respect to the number of stories, I'm, I'm generally okay with it.
Yeah, I'm not sure what Community Planning's issue is. They don't normally have a concern with.
Yeah, yeah, that is, trying to understand where they're coming from.
Coming from, because that's pretty standard with the garage, integral garage design that we're seeing here.
Yeah.
It's pretty common to have more than two stories. So I don't have a concern with that one, and I agree with you tying the driveway width to the site plan.
The, the height variances are, I mean, aside from the main pedestrian entrance height, which we discussed, the height variances are very small. I mean, point two-eight meters on a side main wall.
And variance three,
Oh.
regarding the width of vehicle entrances through the front main wall, that's a zoning interpretation thing because it's not really the front main wall, it's the side.
It, yeah, yes, yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, it's a good point.
Impact. And I don't, I mean, the house is large, but I don't think it has a big, a negative impact, given its location on the corner like this.
Yeah.
Big, you know, it's probably, if it's going to go somewhere, it's not bad on this lot.
Yeah.
I think that's my.
Yeah, fair enough.
My summation.
When I went through the application at home, I was very concerned with the three-car garage. And I still am in isolation. I, I think on its own, the three-car garage on a street really dominate, and particularly leaves such a little bit of the remainder of the building there to offset it, that it's dominating. But I think the way in which they've angled the driveway and basically put landscaping in front of one of the cars is mitigating that. So it wouldn't be my first choice, but I think that they've, they've done a reasonable job. I don't understand the condition for height. I don't understand why that is a concern, given what's in the area. I remain concerned with the, the elevation of the front entrance. I, I don't see any, I don't see any reason for it. I think it could be easily corrected. And I don't see any obvious applications that are like this, that would suggest that that's the dominant character. The reason that I was delayed was I was searching through the neighborhood. And it seems to me that the dominant character is for an entrance that's more at grade than this one. So I, I still have trouble with, and I don't believe the modification that planning is recommended is really all that helpful.
Yeah.
So I, I'm not prepared to support variance number two, even as modified.
All right, and I think.
Yeah, neither am I.
I think the implication is that they have to dig deeper, right?
Yeah.
In order to accommodate the house, which.
Or internalize the steps.
Yeah, internalize some of the steps, but I'm looking at the, I mean, just the height of the basement windows. It's not, it doesn't need to be that high out of the ground. So, okay. I think we know.
Does that, sorry, but then does that, is that where planning is coming in with the, their request for refusal of the variance concerning three stories versus two?
Maybe.
Is it, either concerned that the basement's just elevated too high out of the ground?
It could be, it could be.
All right.
I hadn't thought of that.
But, yeah, that could be where they're coming from. But if we don't approve variance two, I would hate to see them design a building where they have to come back for another variance, because we refuse the number of stories when it can be accommodated but meet the one point five. Or sorry, the one point two on the.
Four four nine is a pretty good example. Four four nine is a pretty good example, and it's pretty close to the subject property. It's on Ruth, but it's a, it's a fair example.
Yeah. I mean, as we've said, most of the houses with integral garages end up with a story variance.
Yeah.
I don't know, it's up to my colleagues, who are going to make a motion, what you wanna do about that one, I'm in your hands.
Well, at, at this point, just, uh, to speak about it, I'd be prepared to approve the application with variance number two removed. I, I'm not, I'm not supportive of that, even as varied by, even as, uh, adjusted by planning. And then there's a transportation, um, condition.
And the amendment to variance eight, or sorry, it's not eight, it's, uh, seven? No, six, thank you.
The width of the driveway?
Yeah, from nine to eight.
Sure, yeah, yeah, but, and to, and the point that was made earlier, perhaps Jason or Jordan could make the, the, uh, the motion that it be tied to the site plan, I think is reasonable, because otherwise the wide width would go out to, could go out to the street, and I don't think that's desirable.
Okay, with the reduction, do we have an updated site plan to tie it to? Otherwise, we may just need to employ wording that just says, uh, that ties it to a six-meter curb cut.
That's right, because she sent it in and we didn't get it, yeah.
We can use, we've used the word splay before in our, uh, conditions, haven't we? No, I mean, but we could, we could limit the curb cut, no?
Yeah, we could do that.
Okay.
To a maximum of eight meters.
Why couldn't you say that the curb cut, well, the, that it, that it goes to a six-meter curb cut?
Yeah.
That's perhaps easier, I, I'd really hate to see this go out all the way to the street.
No, no, no.
Yeah, I think we can come up with some wording.
A six-meter curb cut that widens to eight meters in-
A maximum of, yeah, of eight meters.
In front of the garage. Okay.
Uh.
Wanna take a crack at it?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Niffel, do you want me to?
Sure.
Yeah, okay. Uh, make a motion to approve the subject application, uh, in part as follows, uh, so, approval of variance number one, refusal of variance number two, approval of number three, approval of number four, approval of number five, uh, modified variance number six. Uh, will read a driveway, uh, that is, uh, in the front yard passes through the front yard maybe at least six meters wide, a maximum of six meters wide, the proposed driveway is nine meters wide, and shall be six meters wide at the, at the curb?
They amended that to eight meters.
Oh, I'm sorry, it was amended to eight meters, and we, we need to put a condition on that.
Yeah.
Uh, so, that's modified to eight meters, and the condition is that the driveway shall be splayed in-
No.
Or shall be reduced to six meters at the curb. Is that? Do, is it updated, though? I just, sorry, I didn't-
It's splayed on the-
Showing it nine meters, that's why.
Yeah, so we can't, no. So the proposed driveway is eight meters wide. And then we could just finish the variances and say, subject to the condition that the driveway be six, six, six meters at the curb and widen to, what? Yeah.
It's not at the curb, okay, so it'd be six meters at the property line? Thank you for catching it. Yeah, it's a good point, yeah, yeah, so Deputy Secretary Treasurer is correct, uh, it would be, uh, the wording would be reduced to six meters at the property line, at the front property line. From the pro- front property line to the curb, six meters, that's, that's good. Eight meters.
So that is the front? You said the front.
The front lot line.
I believe it is the front lot line, because that's why they need the, that's why they need the, which-
Uh, let's get a compass direction on that lot line.
Yeah, it's fronting Ruth.
Okay.
And that's where the garage is.
The lot line, fronting Ruth. We got that?
Good way of saying it.
Okay, and, uh, I noted- Yeah, we've got forestry, we've got transportation, and that's it, because that addresses the rest of the planning staff report, we-
Yep.
We're not in line with, okay, that's my motion. Sorry, a little late in the day.
I'm not gonna ask you to repeat it.
Uh, staff did, we captured my motion, okay, yeah, okay.
Mr. Niffel, are you willing to second it? Alright, all those in favor, that is unanimous, the application as amended has been approved.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Alright, I believe that's the last item for us. And the, uh, the, uh, meeting is concluding at six eighteen PM. Thank you to s- Yes.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the-
Thank you, Mr. Allison, and I'll assume Mr. Niffel's seconded. Thank you to staff, and thank you to my fellow panel members. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Alright, I, that's, miss-